So Raymond Guarino is here and I'm alone in the room. Paula Johnson?
I'm here, alone in the room.
Sandra Zim?
I'm also alone in the room and here.
Jennifer Bishop?
Here, I am alone, but the children may hop in.
Sharon Gilio?
I am here, I'm alone in the room.
Okay. Jessica Brown?
I am here and I'm alone in the room.
Heather Raymond?
I'm here, I am for the first time in eight months alone in a room by myself. Yay!
Dottie Oden?
I'm here and alone in the room.
Okay. Gloria Timmons?
I'm here, alone in the room.
Okay. We also have Dr. Mosley. Here, alone in the room. Okay, we have Dr. McKinney.
Here and alone in the room.
Okay, we have Ms. Bobby Bagley.
Good evening, Happy New Year. I'm here and I'm alone as a person in the room, but I have two little dogs with me.
Okay. We have Mr. Parker.
Evening, I'm here and alone in the room.
Okay. And we have, who am I missing? We have Spencer Dunn, who I believe is a student rep, and also Liz Brunel. Let me know if I mispronounce your name.
You pronounced my name right, yep. I'm here and I'm alone in the room.
Okay, and Ms. Brunel?
Yep, I'm here and I'm alone in the room.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have, for the organizational meeting, we have a very short agenda. We have nominations for president, nominations for clerk, establish roll call order. I also noticed that committee assignments are on there, but that's for the new president to take care of, I guess, at some point in time. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna open up the floor to nominations for president for the year 2021.
I would like to move to nominate Heather Raymond for president.
Seconded.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
Yes, I move to nominate Ray Guarino for president.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, so we have Heather Raymond and Ray Guarino. Are there any other nominations?
Move to close nominations.
I second that.
Okay. On the motion to close nominations for president, Raymond Guarino votes yes. Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Sandra Zim?
Yes.
Jennifer Bishop?
Yes.
Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Heather Raymond?
Yes.
Dottie Oden?
Yes.
Okay, so we have two people for president and...
And Gloria Timmons say yes as well.
I'm sorry, I missed you Gloria, I'm sorry.
No problem.
So what we have done in the past is allowed those people who are nominated to say a few words. Ms. Raymond, if you'd like to go first, you can go first, or you can go second, whatever you want to do.
Generally, the person making the nomination can speak as well before the people nominated, so I just wanna allow Ms. Oden and Ms. Timmons their time before we talk.
I will have to say, I think Ms. Raymond has done an excellent job under some difficult circumstances. She has two years of experience under her belt at this point, as they say, and I think she's done an excellent job. I know it's a big time commitment, and I thank her for her service, and I think she would serve us well for the next year. Thank you.
Okay. Would you like to go next, Ms.?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Heather, for, Ms. Raymond, for running this year, but I think it's time to close the book on your presidency at this time because of a lot of things that occurred during the year. Maybe some is your fault, some may not be your fault, but I think we need to move on to elect another president at this time.
Ms. Raymond, would you like to speak?
Sure. I have enjoyed being the president over the last two years. This past year has been extraordinary by any measurement, and it's been very challenging, I think, for every single person on the board and all of our staff and our families and our students. It's just been a really difficult nine months, and I don't see that difficulty changing anytime soon. I'm happy to continue to serve in this capacity. I recognize the time commitment that being president takes. It's not, it's not just a couple hours a week. It's sometimes 10 hours a week, sometimes almost a full-time job. And so I'm willing and able to keep doing that if that's what the board wants. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to say a few things. First off, I want to thank Ms. Timmons for nominating me for president. I'm accepting the nomination, not because I hold a grudge against anyone, not, I don't hold a grudge against our current president. It's not personal. Not even because I think I'm gonna get enough votes to win, but I know what's... I'm running for president to the board to send a message to the fellow members of the board about the leadership of the president over the past year. I believe that the president is supposed to have a working relationship with the superintendent. She's supposed to be the point person for the board in communicating the board's wishes to the superintendent, and I saw that communication break down until it was non-existent. And that's not all on the superintendent. It takes two to communicate. I also saw what I believe was a lack of respect for the democratic process. The will of the board was to convene a pandemic committee, and the president didn't do that. And when she did try it, she wanted to run it herself, and then, which is not really the way we do subcommittees, and when it was discussed, she suggested making it a committee of the whole. And did that. She sort of made it, we did discuss that as a committee of the whole. The board discussed it at regular meetings, but I would have wanted to have a vote so that the board could give its consent to do that, and when I asked for that, the answer I got was, "I don't care." But I think we should have a little bit more, for lack of a better expression, a little bit more respect for the democratic process. I think also that our board has been unproductive. We continue to hold long meetings, and I don't see us getting things resolved. I don't see us giving the staff in this district the respect for their professionalism or the space they need to do their jobs. We have to show, we have to do more. I believe that this board needs to do more to show the people in the district that we trust them to do their job. Otherwise, we're not gonna have a lot of people that are gonna wanna work in this district. We have seen a really tough year because of COVID. We have seen our teachers do some extraordinary things under duress. But I think that if you think that last year was tough, I think the next couple of years are gonna be really tough because the state of New Hampshire is continuing to abandon funding for the critical needs of public education. That's what's gonna happen over the next two years. Once we get past COVID. So I think this board really needs to get its act together with leadership in the superintendent seat and allow that superintendent to do the job without micromanagement, without acrimony. So whatever happens, whether you vote for me or not, it doesn't matter. I'm not gonna hold it against anybody on this board. If you don't vote for me, I'm still here to do my job. I was here for the past three years, and whatever, whoever was president, when they called on me to work in the subcommittees, I did that, whatever they assigned me to, and I will continue to do that. So however people vote, it doesn't matter. So I just thank you for your consideration. So with that, I think it's time that we take the vote. So when I call your name, just say either Heather Raymond or Raymond Guarino.
Mr. Guarino, has it been the policy or the practice to allow other people to speak if they wish? I don't...
It really hasn't, but I mean, if it's up to the board, if someone else has something else to say, that's fine. Sure. Does anybody have anything else to say?
No.
I don't see any. Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So I think it's time to vote. So Raymond Guarino is gonna vote for, Raymond Guarino. Paula Johnson?
Heather Raymond.
Okay. Sandra Zim?
Raymond.
Jennifer Bishop?
Heather Raymond.
Sharon Gilio?
Raymond Guarino.
Jessica Brown?
Raymond Guarino.
Heather Raymond?
I guess I'll vote for myself.
Dottie Oden?
Heather Raymond.
And Gloria Timmons?
Ray Guarino.
Okay, so that's five for Heather Raymond and four for Raymond Guarino, so Heather Raymond will continue to be our president for 2021. Congratulations, Heather. Okay, the next order of business is to nominate someone for clerk for 2021. Ms. Gilio?
I'd like to nominate Raymond Guarino for clerk.
I second it.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Jen Bishop for clerk.
I'll second it.
Are there any other nominations? I'd like to nominate Sharon Gilio.
Can I decline? Thank you. I would prefer not to take on that role this year, but thank you.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for clerk? I am also, I'm also gonna decline the nomination for clerk.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does Jen want, does Jen even want it? Does she have the time to do that? I mean...
That's a good question. I should've asked her.
Well, I just...
So I'm pretty decent at managing my time when I am aware of meetings and responsibilities, but it's certainly not something I will shy away from, so thank you for the nomination.
So you're accepting?
Guess I am.
Okay, alright. Are there any other nominations for clerk? Nope. I don't see any. If you wanna say a few words, Ms. Bishop, you're welcome to.
I think I just said them all. Thank you.
Alright. Before I take the vote, I just wanna thank everybody on this board who had supported me in the past for clerk, but I think it's time that I step aside and let people, especially people who have been newly elected, like Ms. Bishop on this Gilio. Like I said, I would've liked to see Ms. Gilio do it, but she, you know, declined, but I just wanna thank everybody who had supported me in the past, but...
Well, thank you for all your hard work, Ray.
Oh, thanks, I appreciate it.
I'm gonna call you.
Okay, so when I call your name, just tell me who you would like to vote for. So Raymond Guarino votes for Jennifer Bishop. Paula Johnson?
Jennifer Bishop. I know she'll do a great job.
Okay. Sandra Zim?
Jen Bishop.
Okay. Sharon Gilio?
Jen Bishop.
Jessica Brown?
Jen Bishop.
Okay. Heather Raymond?
Jen Bishop.
Dottie Oden?
Jen Bishop.
Gloria Timmons?
Jen Bishop.
Did I miss someone?
Me.
Jennifer Bishop, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm bright red. I wasn't expecting this. I guess I'll vote for me as well.
Okay. Nine votes for Jennifer Bishop, so Ms. Bishop is our clerk for 2021. Congratulations.
Thanks, Ray.
You're welcome. So we have, we have one more piece of business, and that is, before I turn this meeting over to our president, Heather Raymond, and that is to establish the roll call order. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna call a person's name, and then Ms. Cancela's gonna pick out a number, and that's gonna be the order from which they vote, the voting order for 2021. Okay? So Raymond Guarino.
Lucky number seven.
Okay. Paula Johnson?
Number six.
Okay. Sandra Zim?
Number eight.
Okay. Jennifer Bishop?
Number one.
Okay. Sharon Gilio?
Number two.
Okay. Jessica Brown?
Number five.
Okay. Heather Raymond?
Number three.
Okay. Dottie Oden?
Number four.
Okay. Gloria Timmons?
By default, number nine.
Number nine.
I've been there before, Gloria. I think you've been number nine a couple times.
Okay. So I think what I'm going to do now is to, I don't know if we should adjourn and start the new meeting, or maybe I should turn it over to Heather, and she can talk about the committee assignments. Maybe I'll do that. Is that okay, Heather?
Yeah, sure, that works for me, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Guarino.
And I will also turn over the clerk duties to Ms. Bishop, and you have, did you get the order? The voting order, Ms. Bishop?
I did. I figured I should probably know it, so I wrote it down.
Okay, excellent. Alright, so with that, I'm gonna turn over the meeting to Ms. Raymond.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino, and thank you, everybody, for coming and voting, and I think it's healthy when we have options and people have the opportunity to speak their mind. That's kind of what the process is all about. So everybody got one of these sheets in their packet. It is their board committee assignments form. If each member could fill this out or send me an email just saying what they want, I will sit down tomorrow while my son is at the orthodontist. If you can get him to me before nine, I'll sit down at the orthodontist and try and plug everybody into their committee where they want to be. I would like to see some of our newer members who are halfway through their terms or a quarter of the way through their terms volunteer to be some of the committee chairs, because I think that that's good experience before the people who are leaving the nest leave next fall. So if people could get these to me today, tonight, if you don't have time, if our meeting goes late, I will do them within 24 to 48 hours of when I get them, and I'll have that for everybody, hopefully, quickly, so we can get going. Any questions? Anybody object to that plan?
That's fine.
Okay, great. That's all I have to say.
Do we need to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Yes, I believe so.
Seconded.
Do I do roll call now, or is Ray?
You do it.
Yeah, you can do it.
Touch face.
Do you know what everybody got for a number?
I do. So Jen Bishop votes yes. Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Heather Raymond?
Yes.
Dottie Oden?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Ray Guarino?
Yes.
Sandra Zim?
Yes.
And Gloria Timmons?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn 9-0.
Okay. So we adjourn at 6:24 PM. If anybody needs to stretch their legs now would be a good time, because then we will launch into our next meeting. On Monday, January 4th, 2021, this is our first meeting of the National Board of Education for the new year. Happy New Year, everybody, and welcome. Ms., oh, I'm sorry, we are meeting this evening via Zoom pursuant to the governor's emergency order number 12, which if anyone has been watching over the last week, he did extend his emergency orders out some, so we are still able to meet via Zoom. For those in the public wishing to call in during the public comments period, the phone number to call is 834-089-2274, and the passcode is 719462. This information is also on our website under the BOE minutes section. You can click right on the agenda, and it is updated with the appropriate way to log in. Ms. Bishop is our clerk for 2021. Ms. Bishop, if you could call the roll, I would appreciate it.
So this is to open the meeting?
Yes.
See who's here? Yes. I'll follow the order. Jen Bishop is here. I'm in my house alone as normal, but children may be walking through. Sharon Gilio?
I'm here and I'm in the room alone.
Heather Raymond?
I'm here and I am alone.
Dottie Oden?
I'm here and I'm in the room alone.
Jessica Brown?
I'm here and I'm in the room alone.
Paula Johnson?
I'm here and I'm in the room alone.
Ray Guarino?
I'm here and I'm in the room alone.
Sandra Zim?
I'm here and I'm alone.
And Gloria Timmons?
I'm here, I'm alone.
Okay, we also have this evening Dr. Mosley, Dr. McKinney, Mr. Parker, to the seat, Mr. Donovan from Administration. We also have Ms. Constantino and Ms. Bagley from Public Health, and our newest members, Ms. Brunel and Mr. Dunn from South and North respectively. I hope I got that right. Okay, so we've had a request to go back to doing the prayer and the pledge at the beginning of our meetings, which I think is a fine idea. I don't have the prayer with me, and it is something that's specific that all municipalities use when they open meetings, so in lieu of that, I'd like to ask everyone to take a moment of silence. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And as far as the pledge, when we are in the building, I go around the circle. This time, because I don't have a circle to go around, I'm gonna go around my Zoom screen and try and keep track of who said it, and we'll see how I do. Oh, let's do it in voting order. I can keep track of that. So, Ms. Bishop, you're first. If you could please lead us in the pledge. And I understand that it's difficult for everyone to stand, because we'll just see everyone's torsos, and I don't really want that, so I think it's fine for us to remain in the screen. Oh, and thank you so much to Ms. Johnson for supplying a flag for all of us to say our pledge to.
Okay. I don't, oh, hold on. I can't see the Zoom anymore. I'm not looking at, hold on. Sorry. I wasn't expecting this tonight, and I'm a little nervous, I'm gonna forget all the words.
Well, all say it together, that's the thing. Alright.
Oh, good, good, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Alright, nicely done, everybody. Thank you so much. Okay, so on to our agenda items. The first item of the new year is always a welcome to our new student members of the board. Welcome very much to Mr. Dunn from Nashville High School North and Ms. Brunel from Nashville High School South. Dr. Mosley, did you have something?
Yes, I just want to welcome the students, you know, Spencer and Liz. Congratulations on your elections and welcome to the board. We're happy to have you. You know, you're going to experience something that only two other students have experienced, and that's being part of us school board during COVID-19. So, you know, I'm so happy that you're a part of us, and certainly don't be bashful, asking questions. At some point, you're gonna be assigned a liaison, and that person is from the board, and you'll be able to ask them questions and just kind of go over things, and just for clarity. If you have additional questions, please feel free to reach out to Dr. McKinney or Mr. Parker, or even myself, and we'll be certainly happy to answer your questions. Welcome, and, you know, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley, and I want to echo Dr. Mosley's sentiments of welcome. I think in the past, Ms. Timmons has been the liaison, and she's met monthly with the new board members to make sure that you guys have an opportunity to ask any questions you might wanna ask. In the meantime, just know that there is a point on the agenda where you'll have an opportunity to speak. That's your time to speak on whatever you feel you need to speak on, on behalf of your constituents. And then, it's been my practice to, when I open the floor to questions, in Zoom, I kind of go down a list, but I always open it up to the student members as well. We found over the last seven months especially, that our student members have really important insights to the board and to how we're doing things, so I'm looking forward to hearing from both of you as well. Did either of you wish to speak now?
I'll just introduce myself. So I'm Spencer Dunn. I'm a junior at Nashville North. This is a great opportunity, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you, and it's definitely a unique experience during COVID, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Ms. Brunel?
Yeah, so nice to meet everyone.
Yeah, so nice to meet everyone finally. My name's Elizabeth, but you can trust me as Liz and I'm really looking forward for what does you have to come.
Okay, welcome. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is an update from Dr. Mosley about the parent survey and an update from Ms. Bagley and Ms. Constantino from Nashville Public Health regarding the most current COVID numbers. So take it away, please, Dr. Mosley.
Okay, I'll be brief and then I'll turn it over to Bobby and Ms. Constantino. So we just, we had our serve apparent, I'll call it, we get, we're using these words interchangeably. So I want to be very clear. We conducted a poll and the poll was to determine whether parents wanted their, their, their children to be either hybrid or go back remote. And to be honest with you, there's some, some positives on, on this. I just wanted to personally thank the parents and the guardians who participated in this. It was probably our most active and highly responsive poll we've sent out. We had close to about ten thousand responses from the public. We had about nine hundred in, about ninety two hundred in English, a hundred and fifty two in Portuguese and seven hundred and fifty four respondents in Spanish. That gave us a total of ten thousand one hundred and seventy eight total. In terms of results, it, it's, it's what I anticipated. It's, it's, I'll just tell you. Yes, forty five percent remote learning only. That means parents or students wanted to, to remain remote. And fifty five percent of the respondents wanted to go back in hybrid. So slightly more in favor of hybrid, but you certainly, if you look at the, you know, the significance of it, it's not that far off. So it's kind of split down the middle. So this is helpful for us. I say the collective us. I'm really referring to principals who are going to use this information to start planning their schedules for students. And whether it's in person or remote. So this is very, very helpful as we start to look at schedules and staff availability. That's all I have to report out right now. I want to turn the floor over to Ms. Bagley and her colleague to talk a little bit about the, the COVID cases in the city and also to the state.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley, and thank you again, board, for inviting us and allow for us to share information that will allow for a situational update for where we stand right now during this pandemic. I do have Angela Constantino, our epidemiologist, who is going to present on five slides that we pulled together and she's going to share her screen so that you can see the numbers. What we have been experiencing is the continuation of substantial COVID cases. And so at this level, we're still working really hard within the Division of Public Health and Community Services at, in Nashua and of course statewide to try and continue to mitigate what we're seeing with regard to the spread of COVID throughout the state and in particular in our city of Nashua and the greater Nashua region. And Angela is going to take you through some slides that you will see the work that continues to be done and the continual increase that we see as a result of the holidays, as a result of people being indoors more and longer because of the weather. And, you know, just overall, people are getting to the point, we, we stopped, started to see this in around November time where people started to have COVID fatigue. We push out messaging about social distancing. We pushed out messaging about the importance of wearing masks and how the masks help reduce the spread of the respiratory droplets from one to another. The social distancing also helps with that as well. Individuals staying home when they're sick and of course, the frequent washing of hands has been messaging that we started, you know, from the beginning of this pandemic. And, you know, as time has gone on, we're ten months into this now. And, you know, as I mentioned, you know, people are going, they're, they're tired of, you know, these efforts. We've had thousands and thousands of people that have, you know, done the social distancing, the wearing of the mask. And we do have, you know, those who, who choose not to. And as a result of that, we still continue to see spread in our communities. The, the fact that the, the virus itself is highly contagious. And so Angela is going to take you through some of the slides. You can see where we currently stand as of a data that was put out from our State Department of Health and Human Services and Johns Hopkins as of yesterday. Angela?
Thanks, Bobby. So as Bobby mentioned, I can provide a situational report. So let's see. So this is where we stand in regards to Nashua case activity. There are currently four thousand one hundred and seventy one cumulative cases in Nashua. Of those cases, approximately five hundred and fifty six are currently active and infectious. And at the city of Nashua Division of Public Health, we're currently following four hundred and forty one of those cases. This means that approximately eighty seven percent of Nashua cumulative cases have recovered from their illness. We've had six additional deaths in the past week for fifty six total deaths and a case fatality rate of one point three percent. And then our hospitalization rate in Nashua is at two point six percent compared to the state's rate of one point nine percent. So in regards to community level transmission in Nashua, we're currently exceeding two out of three indicators that push us into substantial community-based transmission. The first indicator is our incidence rate, which tells us how quickly disease is occurring in the community. So over the past fourteen days, we've had seven hundred and seventy five point five new cases per hundred thousand people. And we were considered substantial in this category when we surpassed a hundred new cases per hundred thousand. Then we have our percent positivity rate, which is a good indicator of the general spread of disease in the community at large. We're considered substantial in this category as well. In the past week, there has been three hundred and fifty five tests conducted on average each day in Nashua. And forty three of those tests have been positive each day, which gives us a percent positivity rate of twelve point two percent. And then we have our new hospitalizations indicator, which shows us how quickly hospitals are being burdened by disease and we're considered minimal in this category. Last week, we had one point one new hospitalizations per hundred thousand over the past two weeks. So just to frame what this means and what community-based transmission means and why these indicators are important. For a case to be categorized as transmitted via community-based transmission, there needs to be no clear source of infection. So this means that the individual must have contracted the virus somewhere out in the community and the specific origin of the infection can't be determined. And so community-based transmission is difficult to track due to this unknown origin of the case, which is why we use these three indicators to give us an indication of spread in the community. So the higher these indicators become, the more likely there is to be community-based transmission. And therefore, there's more likely an unpredictable spread of disease. So here we have cumulative New Hampshire cases and deaths. You can see that as cases get older, the likelihood of death increases. But what's interesting and new about this graph is that we've had a demographic shift in New Hampshire in regards to the age distribution of our cases. So back in the spring, the majority of our cases were in the fifty to eighty age group ranges. But now we've seen a shift where the majority of our cases are in our younger groups, specifically twenty to twenty nine, which has the highest case count out of all of the age groups. So if we look to see what's going on in Nashua, these are our monthly cases from August to December of twenty twenty. The blue bar is Nashua cases age zero to nineteen and the orange is all Nashua cases. So the scales are a little bit different here. So the orange line is associated with the right axis and the blue bars are associated with the left axis. So you can see that the cases under nineteen are rising at a similar rate to all of the other cases. But they are undoubtedly rising. So our cases under the age of nineteen have essentially been doubling themselves from month to month. And it's highly likely that this trend will continue. The more cases that there are, the more cases that there will be. The reproductive number for COVID nineteen is standardly around two point five, which means that on average, each case will affect two point five people. So it's very likely that we'll continue to see this doubling trend into the near future until we can really hit these cases hard and either cut them in half or have a significant impact on the number of new cases per month. Bobby, did you have anything else you'd like to add? I think you're on mute, Bobby.
That, that is the line of twenty twenty. So as we move into twenty twenty one, we'll get better at this. We won't have to keep saying you're on mute. But the significance of the information that's being presented here is that we continue to see increases in our cases. We've seen that demographic shift of increasing cases in younger age groups as well. One of the other things on the previous slide, slide number four. And in looking at some of the data trends across the state, one of the things that I did note in looking at some of our, our deaths is that every population age group is, is being impacted by this except ten to nineteen, so far, we do not have a recorded death in that age group, but we have them in every other age group. Varied numbers, of course, with the largest number in our age group, eighty and plus. And, and we, we talked about this, you know, the significance of that is that is a population where there's quite a bit of comorbidity with that particular group. But we've seen increase in cases and we're seeing deaths across all of these age groups. One of the things that we've also noted over the past ten months in dealing with this pandemic is that we, we are tending to deal with a viral infection that does appear to be mild in many of the age groups, but does have some detrimental effects on individuals that have underlying health conditions. And again, those that are, you know, eighty, well, from sixty up, but more so in the eighty and plus population group. The significance of the work that we've been doing with trying to mitigate this, you know, has been around, again, the social distancing and the masking. So you know, we're hoping as we come into twenty twenty one that we'll start to see a shift in this. We've always talked about, you know, flattening this curve. We've seen that happen over the summer. And we're hoping that we can see this happen over the next few months. Vaccine is now available for those who right now in the phases that are being administered by the state of New Hampshire with our healthcare providers and first responders first. Those who are in the highest risk categories will be in the next phase. And then we'll get to our general population sometime later in the, the spring. But that's going to be another one of those measures that we're hoping to, will help decrease what we're seeing as far as the spread of COVID in our community and even decrease in deaths as well. One of the things with the vaccine, however, is that it is right now for the two vaccines that are out and available, Moderna and Pfizer, it is a two-dose vaccination, which means you get your first dose and about a month later, you get that second dose. And so because of that time period, we probably will not see too much of a shift in the change of this data that Angela is presenting until sometime around March or April. So that means that we have to continue to be very vigilant and diligent with the measures that we put in place throughout the community. If we really want to see significant changes with cases and deaths in our community and in the state overall. Thank you, Angela. I'm not sure if there's any questions that folks have, but that's the information that we did want to share with you. We think it's really important as we kick off this new year for the situational update to be made known to the Board of Education and to the school officials. So that people can make really good informed decisions as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Constantino and Ms. Bagley. We really appreciate you coming out here and presenting the data and doing so in such a clear way. I find this so much easier to understand when you're presenting it than I do when I click on the dashboard myself and and look at it. It just, it doesn't click the same way. So I really appreciate it. I have one question. When on the vaccine schedule, can we expect to see our teaching and our support staff being vaccinated? I saw something on the news this weekend about school nurses maybe starting soon. But what's the, what's the real information on that?
So we have the vaccine being distributed out in, in phases, right? And so right now we're in phase one A. In phase one, where we're calling categories one A and one B are at the point of receiving the vaccination. Still, the school nurses, because they are in congregate setting, would be in one A slash one B, right? And so they're right now can go on to the state website and start registering to get vaccinated. We probably will not see a shift into the general population of individuals until somewhere around, and I, and I'm saying this loosely, around March, because it's, it's phasing out, right? To where at the beginning of January, we were expecting or hoping that the rollout would be a little bit quicker with who was getting vaccinated with our healthcare professionals, our first responders and those who are on the front line and we're, we're doing that right now. So long-term care facilities are on the schedule to receive vaccination of not just the healthcare workers, but also other residents there. And the reason why we chose this strategy, because when we looked at our data, as you saw, the individuals that are most at risk for hospitalization or, or death are in that older population group. And so because of that, the idea is to get the healthcare and first responders vaccinated first so that we can maintain a workforce that can be responsive to individuals that need care and then to vaccinate those in those populations groups where hospitalization or death are highest. So that's how New Hampshire is doing it. You know, the cities, the CDC did put out, you know, this phasing for the entire country. Different states are doing different things based on the vulnerabilities in their communities. And so for us right now in New Hampshire, this is what the state has chosen to do to protect those that are the most vulnerable. Then you'll see that shift over to in one B, that's going to be individuals in congregate settings as well as individuals that have comorbidities or underlying health conditions that, again, if they're exposed to COVID, could possibly have health outcomes that might put them at greater risk for hospitalization or even more serious health effects as a result. And so that will be the next phase of folks in one B. And that's going to include, believe it or not, a lot of people. And so to get all those folks vaccinated is going to take some time. You know, ideally, we're hoping to see, you know, things move through so that by the time we get to April, May, we've got the majority of our populations vaccinated. In New Hampshire, we received about a little over forty thousand doses and about twenty four thousand doses. Don't quote me on those exact numbers, but about twenty four thousand doses have been administered thus far.
Wow.
And we do expect to have an update. We meet on every Tuesday with the state. And so we expect to hear an update from them tomorrow on where we, where we are right now with vaccination, the rollout and then how things will continue to progress.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Bagley. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I have quite a few questions. Could we put up, I think, slide number one? Again, and then slide number two, I think.
Slide number one is just our.
Okay, then the second slide. I think it was with the numbers. Well, we started with the numbers because I wrote everything down, but I need to see them again to ask my question. Oh, by the way, Ms. Bagley, thank you so much for coming. Happy New Year's. Did you ever get me the numbers on the Y, the Boys and Girls Club, Girls Inc. and Daycare? How much COVID activity there is out there?
So I do believe that that information was sent, but it was sent in an aggregate because the, the, the numbers for each site do not put out identifying information that way, but it was sent out in aggregate. I do believe Angela sent that information out to you a couple of weeks ago.
I never got it. So.
Ms. Johnson, if you could, if you could please send me an email. Or, or what's your email address? Or?
IsJohnsonPA@Nashua.edu. Thank you.
Oh, so I must have, we must have sent to the wrong email address.
Okay.
Congregate information on, on.
I'd like to see what's happened with the Y, you know, all these other places that have been open because I know daycares didn't close during the whole beginning of COVID. And then we were sending students, you know, parents who didn't have daycare, who were city workers, we were sending them over to the Y for that. Okay, so we've got four thousand one hundred and seventy cumulative cases. That's just cases that keep coming. Continuous cases.
On your cumulative case. Every case that we've had.
So in the city, we've only had four thousand one hundred and seventy one cases. Is that it total?
Yeah.
So that's, so that cumulative number is actually based on the number of people that have gotten tested. So as far, that, that number is probably underreported. And the reason why I say. And the reason why I say that is because not everyone has been tested. So our cumulative cases is going to be based on the number of individuals that have been identified testing.
Okay. So we have right now 556 active cases or we had?
We have, as of today, 556 active cases.
So they definitely have COVID-19?
They have COVID-19 and they are currently actively shedding virus.
Shedding virus. And we're following 441 who have what? Have something or they don't have anything?
So these are people who are sick, but they're the people who are receiving contact from us. So we're not able to contact every single person that has COVID-19. We have to prioritize because there are so many cases. These 441 individuals are being followed by us at the Health Department. And then the remainder, around 100 individuals are not being followed by us, but they are under quarantine and isolation guidelines from their primary care provider.
Okay. And we have about 80,000 people in the city plus now. Okay. So, and the whole time that COVID's been around for, what do we have? 10 months now, we've had, thank God, only 56 deaths in the city. Is that it?
Yes, 56 people have died.
56 people and the majority of them have been probably nursing home. So 1.3% on fatality, 87% recovery rate. Isn't that wonderful? And they didn't have a shot. Hospitalization rate, 2.6%. Can we go on to the next slide, please? Okay. So let's see here. Substantial. New cases per 100,000 over 14 days, 775. This is statewide or this is Nashua?
This is Nashua.
Okay. And we have new hospitals, okay. I think I've got to where I'm going with this. So ages 10 to 19, we really don't have any cases right now. There, there have been no deaths, thank God. Okay.
We have cases, we just haven't had a death in that age group, but we have...
Well, that's okay.
That's not accurate. We, in 0 to 19, we currently, in December, had 298 cases.
298 cases out of 80,000 people. That's not a lot of cases. Nobody wants to see the kids sick. So do we ever track the flu like we're tracking this? Because we have more cases of the flu, A and B, than with the COVID in this city. I'm pretty sure of this. And then, I guess my question's going to be to administration on the board. Are we going to require teachers and support staff to take the shot if they don't want the shot? Because I guess you can probably come and handcuff me right now and probably drag me off because I'm not taking the shot. I am, there's just too much in that shot unknown. We can talk about the Nuremberg Treaty, which was experimental drug use. And this is, in my opinion, where I think it's going because of all the bad side effects in it right now. So, and looking at all of this, I think Nashua was really faring well when you look at the populations and the cases here. And, and we don't put in here exactly how many people were in the nursing homes that passed away. I know seven cases in Dover, I believe, just from the shot itself. So I would really like to get all the cases between the Y, the Boys and Girls Club, Girls Inc., daycare, and how many of these 56 were from the nursing homes? Thank you very much. Because I think it really goes into how we're going to figure out and really do our jobs once and for all here on if these students are going back into the classroom with these numbers, are we going to keep having this fear mongering at this point in time? We flattened the curve. The flattening of the curve was about the deaths. Cases are cases and there's cases that come back false positive that we don't talk about with the PCR tests. That's not accurate. The person who, who invented it even talks about that. And now Dr. Fachi's coming out with more information on who. So I do my homework. I do a lot of reading on this. I'm just not shooting from the hip. And this is why I keep asking these questions here. Our students and these parents deserve more than what we're giving them right now in this information. And I would, well, who, everybody, to start really reading up like I've done pages after pages after pages here of this information. And I don't want to see false information being given up out and our parents are freaking out here and our staff. Thank you very much for your time.
Point, point of information, Madam President, I think the last speaker said it was 298 cases out of 80,000. That, that's just in the 0 to 19 age group. So that 300 only represents residents in the 0 to 19 age group. And the other thing, I just want to try to set the record straight. The curve is not flattening. It's actually spiking. And we're setting new records in New Hampshire and in Massachusetts on infection rates. Thank you.
And I'd like to rebut this very quickly because when we talked about flattening the curve, it had to do about the deaths. The death rates are down. Thank God for that.
They're going up.
No, they're not going up. They're not going up.
I, I don't want us to get into a debate about...
Point of information, they're going up.
Mr. Guarino, let me finish my...
I just had a point of information. They're actually going up deaths.
Mr. Guarino, I don't want us to argue about information presented by public health when we have the public health experts in our meeting who know the answers and they just gave it to us. I mean, I just...
Let's ask them about deaths. Are they going up or not?
Okay. So, yes, Ms. Bagley is saying yes, but also her chart said yes, that Ms. Constantino and then Ms. Bagley presented to us.
That's all. I just wanted to set the record straight, Madam President. Just wanted to...
I just, you know...
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zim?
Thank you, Heather. First off, Mrs. Bagley, I would like to thank you. I would like to apologize to you for this unnecessary petty squabbling that we seem to be engaging in. And I would like to say to you, it is no reflection on you. You do a great job. And I'm very proud to be part of this city because of the great job you're doing and because of the great job that I feel our whole city is doing. Having said that, my concern is, or my question, is that when they're talking about essential workers like this Phase 1, in my mind, I look at our teachers and a lot of our teachers have been teaching right along. They have not been able to stop, especially in special education. So to me, they should be classified as essential workers. Can you tell me if that was ever discussed, if there's any possibility that we could get that as part of this? We, we have teachers that, that have been going in right along because, as you know, the governor had special education, a special, a special ruling for those people, a special, special circumstances. And I'm not, please understand, I'm not challenging the legitimate need for that. I'm just saying, has it been considered that these teachers who are, who are dealing with these young children who have a hard time keeping a mask on, I mean, when you have small children, young children, it's harder to say to them, you leave that mask on because I'm sure you understand what I'm saying. So I, is that a question I can respectfully ask you?
Yes, and thank you. And I do appreciate your expression of confidence in, you know, the Health Department and the data that we collect and the work that we do. I do appreciate that. And as we go into this new year, I hope that, you know, we'll all continue to work together because it does require us to work together, you know, to really have the impact that we need to on this disease with regards to our community, the teachers and the students in schools. So I'm hoping that, you know, in our engagement where we're invited, you know, to the meetings and we do believe that the information that we, that we share is received. And so again, I appreciate your, your apologies for the little squabble back and forth. We, 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 what we're looking at with the, the teachers and anybody that's in a congregate setting, those folks are going to be in that 1B category. And so when that time comes for them to register, there will be information that will be pushed out to probably, you know, the schools through a link where they will go on and they will register and they will be invited to get vaccination at the, the site that's being offered at National High South for individuals that want to get the vaccine there. So I do believe, and when we do our presentation next week, what we'll do is we'll include a slide that actually shows the phases and actually shows who's in 1A, 1B, so that you'll be, be able to very specifically see who's listed under there. But because schools are identified as a congregate setting, that is considered an area of high risk. And so that population group will be considered right at the top of the vaccination tier.
But will it be on, so am I understanding that it will be in Phase B, Phase 2?
1B.
1B. Thank you.
I believe it's in 1B. We have a slide that has that information on it and we'll present that next week at the, at the meeting next week.
Well, thank you for your efforts on behalf of our teachers and please keep up the good work. Every little bit of help we can give for our teachers, we want to get it, you know. I feel bad for the teachers who, we have, we've had teachers who gave testimony that they're not considered high risk. I remember one teacher saying she had six times had pneumonia. And so I think she felt she was vulnerable because of that. It certainly sounded vulnerable to me. And so I can appreciate when they're, thank you for your efforts and for your understanding of this difficult time. I appreciate it.
And we appreciate working with the school together. Yes, thank you.
Teamwork. It's a good thing.
Thank you, Ms. Zim, and thank you, Ms. Bagley. That was very helpful. I'm discouraged about when our teachers are, and paras, and secretaries and custodians and everyone who is in the school, school psychologists, where they are on the list. But I understand that we need to protect the absolute most vulnerable first. That makes sense to me. So did anyone else have any questions for Ms. Bagley or Ms. Constantino? Mr. Dunn?
So I just had a question. In your personal opinion, if people maintain six feet distance and both wear masks, how, what percentage does the rate of transmission cut down if no one was wearing masks and we're not six feet? Like, I'm just asking if high schoolers went back to school with teachers and we kept both, but all students and teachers' health in mind, what would the rate of transmission be if someone in the classroom did have COVID? Like, would they quarantine for two weeks? What, what, in your personal opinion, would that be?
Angela? So close contact is defined as being within six feet of a positive case for 10 to 15 minutes or more. So, and that's regardless of masking. So if students were close to a positive case and they had their masks on and they were within six feet, and that's saying, you know, walking or sitting in a classroom or in the hallway or whatever, then they would still need to be quarantined and they would be considered a close contact to a positive case. If they can ensure that they were not within six feet of the positive case for 10 minutes or more, then they would not be quarantined or, or need to be isolated or anything. So it's really the social distancing is the, the top tier here in regards to exposure. So if you never see the person, if you're, you can maintain that six feet, then you're good to go. But once you breach that six feet and even if you have a mask on and you're around them for 10 minutes or more, you'll still have to be quarantined if they're a positive case.
Okay. So with going back to school, if we, well, I'm just saying, because of the poll, 55% of parents want to go back to school. So if we keep that in mind, if we're able to keep six-foot distance and mask at all time and keep down 10 minutes in the hallways, like both North and South principals have proposed, do you think it would be safe? Or should we just wait for the cases to fall or hopefully the curve to be flattened?
I think it's hard to say that something's going to 100% be safe. So there's always going to be a risk, but there are things that you can do to reduce that risk. So reducing the number of kids in the classroom, ensuring that kids are always sitting six feet apart head to head, not desk to desk. And then the masking and other cleaning protocols and, you know, things with lunch and, and the hallways would have to be really ironed out in order to make sure that it was the safest, it was being done the safest as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Guarino. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Thank you, Ms. Constantino. Go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
Yeah, I just want to say really briefly, again, thank you, Ms. Bagley, for, for all that information. I just did some quick math and I'm not very good at math, but accumulated the cumulative infections divided by the number, the population, I had a population of just under 90,000 in, in the city. It's like 5% of population of Nashua has been infected, if my math is right, which is like five out of 100 people. So if you see 100 people, five of them had been infected in Nashua. So I, I want to thank you for all that excellent information that, you know, and it's, it's what we need. As, I don't want to repeat what Ms. Zim said, but we definitely need that teamwork between the, the, the School Department and, and the Health Department. So, so thank you very much again.
Point of information here, I don't want to be argumentative, but I think we might have missed a decimal point. I think we're at a very of 0.5 or 0.05%, not 5%. So I think that's, I think there, I think the decimal point got moved over one there.
The 5,000 divided by 90,000?
No.
You know what? I, let's...
Anyway, I know I don't want to quibble, but I think the number got escalated at the decimal point.
Yeah. Okay. So let's, let's let public health present us with data and numbers because we are not statisticians and I am not good enough at math to resolve that question. So, so I, I think that we should take any, any numbers and just ask for clarification from our public health experts instead of trying to do some of these calculations on the fly, if that is acceptable to everyone.
Yep. So just to clarify, 90,000 divided by 5,000 is about 5%.
Oh, is that the cumulative rate, a number of cases that's not, that's not active at this moment, though?
That's what I said.
All right. I'm sorry. I misunderstood you, sir.
No problem.
Okay. And just a point of clarification, remember, these are of cases that tested. So there are people that are asymptomatic. So we, we do realize that this number may be, you know, undercounting what, what our true cases look like because everybody hasn't been tested. So we know that there's more disease out there. So when we talk about the substantial spread, that's the thing that we need to be very mindful of. When you have substantial spread in your community, it means that there's more virus out there that can be spread from one person to another. And because of the asymptomatic spread, those are going to be individuals that don't know that they have the disease because they may not be showing signs and symptoms of it. Your, Mr. Dunn asked a really good question about, you know, the safety, you know, in the school and what the measures that the school is looking to put in place with the social distancing, with the masking, all of those things can help make the environment in the school safer. But you also have to realize when you have asymptomatic cases in the school, that's when you can have the risk that Angela is talking about, where we can't say it's 100% safe. And that's what we're also experiencing in our communities where we continually see spread, you know, in the community because of those different factors as well. We have a lot of individuals that are wearing masks that are maintaining social distancing, but because this virus is so contagious, it doesn't take, you know, a lot of individuals to continue this spread of what we're seeing to, you know, continue to go on unchecked. So we just have to continue with our vigilance in what we're doing.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Mosley?
This is a question for Angela and Bobby. Have we seen any of the new strain of the virus in New Hampshire?
That has not been reported as of yet. I know that they have been seeing some cases out on the West Coast. Now, you think about our world, Dr. Mosley, with travel being the way that it is, I wouldn't be surprised if we did not have that strain here and it just hasn't been detected because we haven't been screening for it. But as quickly as this virus spread, it would not surprise me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley, and, and thank you, Ms. Bagley and Ms. Constantino. I don't see any other, oh, do I see Ms. Bishop's hand? Take it back. Go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
I just want to say, I was seeing in the news today that New York has its first case of the new COVID strain, upstate New York.
It's coming.
I tend to agree, Ms. Zim.
Unfortunately.
Okay. All right. Before I let Ms. Bagley and Ms. Constantino get on with their evenings, anybody else? All right. I don't see anybody. Ms. Odin, I can't see you. Are you all set?
Yes, thank you. I'm all set. And thank, I, I want to thank...
Yes, thank you. I'm all set. And thank, I I want to thank Ms. Bagley and Ms. Constantino. It was a good presentation. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, ladies, for joining us this evening. I really appreciate when you come here and share the data and explain the data to us. It's very helpful as we move forward in working with the district on what the next step should be. Okay.
Thank you for having us. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Enjoy the New Year. Okay, um, so I apologize to everyone. We are running a bit late on the agenda side today. I wasn't expecting such a thorough update and I'm thrilled to get it. So moving on, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Did anyone have anything that they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Done, moved.
Okay, the motion is by Ms. Johnson, and I'm sorry, who seconded it? Seconded by Ms. Ziem. Okay. Okay, Ms. Bishop, when you're ready, could you please call the roll?
Jen Bishop votes yes. Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Heather Raymond?
Yes.
Dottie Odin?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Ray Garino?
Yes.
Sandra Ziem?
Yes.
And Gloria Timmons.
Gloria, I can't hear you.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay. I have nine zero. Do you concur, Ms. Bishop?
I can add, and that is what I got.
No items removed from the consent agenda. Do we have any communications outside the consent agenda this evening? So this begins our first public comment period, limited to items on this agenda. Just a reminder, folks, the phone number is eight three four zero eight nine two two seven four. The passcode is seven one nine four six two, and the complete instructions can be found on our website under Board of Education Meeting Minutes. If you click on the agenda, it's right there on page two. Okay, Ms. Kinsella? Good evening, caller number four eight six five nine three zero. If you could please identify yourself.
Yes, this is Sonia Prince from Nashua.
Okay, good evening, Ms. Prince. Go ahead.
Hi, just some general comments and concerns about the reopening. I am obviously been vocal. I don't know if you got my email, but I'm definitely not interested in us going into in-person learning in our community when our nurses are working double shifts, some are working twelve-hour shifts. I have a friend who works twelve-hour shifts and she only sees her little son at ten minutes before bed every night. She's exhausted. We don't need to add more cases. They're already compounding, it looks like. Two point five percent, two point five people for every active case. If we have over seven hundred cases, that number is going to go up really fast. So it doesn't make sense to me. I'm looking at places like LA who have much stricter rules than we have, and they have people dying every ten minutes now. And obviously, they have an international airport, so that new strain is probably there causing havoc, but I'm sure it's on its way here soon. And if we're not testing for it, then obviously, we're never going to be able to identify it. So it's probably here. We'll go with that. But anyway, I am concerned that we have some school board members who are putting out misinformation, and I wish that somebody would straighten that out immediately when that happens because misinformation in the educational system is pretty bad. So saying, if I heard correctly, Paula Johnson said seven people in a nursing home got COVID from the vaccine. I don't think that's accurate, but if you can double-check that, that's not true. So you probably contracted it earlier. A vaccine takes three weeks to kick in, so anybody can contract it. But you can verify that with the Department of Health, if you're not sure about what I'm saying. Also, I think that the, you know, there's other countries who are doing shutdowns right now, six to eight weeks, Scotland, England, and it's pretty much the only way they can stop this out-of-control compounding. Same thing is happening to us right now. What is the number, you know, and that's up to the state, which right now I don't see a whole lot of leadership there for prevention. It's all reactive. Putting in a mask order after the election, things like that, not very helpful. So we're getting our our long-term care people tested in June, when the virus was around since March and people were dying, it's too late. So I don't have any faith at the state level, so it's up to you to help out the community and the aldermen and the mayor and everybody involved in the health department and the parents and the teachers. Everybody needs to work together to get a grip on this thing. But I think that even one case in our schools is too many because that will infect two point five more people. And so I think it's a it's a big, big mistake to allow sports or kids to go back to school at this point. So I hope you take that into consideration. I love my community. I don't want to lose people. And I don't want people to have, you know, long-term effects. I have friends who have dizziness and headaches and lung issues, and it's been three months. So I would prefer that we not send the children in just because they're good little carriers and they can bring it to their families and their grandparents and their teachers and their spouses, so on. So thank you very much for listening. I appreciate all that you do. I know this isn't easy for any of you. And I hope you keep the children's safety in mind as number one. We're lucky to have the option to have technology and keep most of our teachers remote. Thank you.
Okay, Madam President.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Timmons.
Can we make sure that you get their name and street address?
Oh, sorry about that. Sonia Prince, forty-nine Tough Drive.
Thank you. Thank you for the reminder, Ms. Timmons, and thank you, Ms. Prince. And just a reminder to people calling in, we need your name and street address. We also would like you to keep it to two minutes, and this is the comment period for items on the agenda. The return to school is not on the agenda this evening. We did have a presentation on COVID numbers in Nashua, but discussion of whether or not to, when to return to school is not on the agenda this evening. We have a special meeting for that coming up next week. If that's what you're calling about, please save it until our second public comment period at the end of the meeting. Okay, Ms. Kinsella, who's next? I think I lost someone there.
I think someone disappeared.
Sorry.
That's okay. I'll take the next caller.
Okay. Good evening, caller six six seven two. If you could please state your name and address and try and keep your comments to two minutes or less.
Yep. Hi, it's Beth Scare, one eleven East Hobart Street. I'm reading a letter from someone who's calling herself a drowning parent. Imagine a world in which your only goal is to protect, guide, and encourage your children to become the very best version of themselves. Add in you losing your job, no money is coming in, and now you have to work backwards and reassess priorities, food versus rent mortgage, utilities versus food, gas to job search or food. What if schools are closed and remote learning is your only choice? What if you had no options and you spent every day making the unyielding choice between impossible odds? Then stacking increasingly more inflexible odds on top of those and try to breathe. You see, teachers shape and mold the minds of our future. Parents, though, parents are here to hug the hurt, fix the boo-boos, embody good examples, and promote the things that cannot be learned from textbooks, but rather through connection. We have lost all of that, the connectivity between students and their teachers. We have also isolated the most vulnerable of our population. What about the students who have no one to hug them and showcase good decisions, kindness, compassion, respect, and more? If this doesn't break your heart, that an estimated total of eleven thousand children were forced to live a trauma that will impact them for the duration of their lifetimes because of our community, our city losing its focus, and I'm not sure what the ethos of humanity is anymore. We must focus on coming together instead of continuing to tear our incredible community apart. What if parents, teachers, administrators, everyone came to the table to fix this? Are there children who are successful at remote learning? Yes. And there are families, teachers, students, administration, et cetera, who have a legitimacy to the concerns of COVID due to immune compromise issues and family or family members living in their households? Absolutely. There are also families who cannot continue to make these impossible choices, families who need to be in classes teaching, families who need to have help, have us help alleviate the need to make the impossible decisions because they want what's best for their child, while simultaneously having to find a way to keep food on the table, the lights on, and the roof over their heads. There are children who have been forced to be alone for the past eight months to live in what can only be described as unspeakable, under incredible stress and no way to even show someone a helpless look, a bruise, a broken stare from a soul who doesn't even know their normal isn't okay. They have lost their voices, so we're pleading, please don't abandon these children anymore. We have an obligation to these children to move mountains for them, to teach how they learn, learn how they need to be taught, and to embody the very essence of humanity. The Nashua community and its children deserve a world of possibilities and a support within one another that is infallible. Let's be honest with one another. We cannot all be collectively working as one unit when there are still secret meetings, hidden agendas, persuasive verbiage and memorandums, and so much more. Our community cannot afford to spend more until our schools can reopen, our lost voices are heard, and our community and its members are no longer drowning underneath a capsized populace of people who have not stopped stopped to flesh out the greater good. Will you agree to work together to get our community back to functioning, to focus on raising our voices, to reopen our schools, so that the muted voices of thousands of our children and families can be heard? I come to you raw and vulnerable as a parent, citizen, and supporter of our teachers. Please cease further negotiations that involve spending money. We simply don't have until our kids are back in the classroom. The longer this takes, it is inevitably taking the last shred of what we parents have to hold on to, hope. A drowning parent. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to get back up on my soapbox here. I don't generally interrupt people when they are making their public comments. I try very hard not to be rude or disruptive. However, this is the public comment period for items on the agenda. We are listening to public comments about items on our agenda in case the public wants to give us information before we vote on things. If you are calling to talk about remote learning, hybrid learning, in-person learning, anything having to do with return to school or not return to school, I will interrupt you and ask you to call back at the appropriate time, which is our second public comment period at the end of this meeting. Okay. Ms. Kinsella, do we have someone new calling about items on the agenda?
I actually have an empty room, so.
All right, I used my mom voice and hopefully it was effective. Okay. So that ends our public comment period for items on the agenda. So we are on to the superintendent's comments. Dr. Mosley, do you have some comments for us this evening?
We made my comments already. I think that the last meeting we had was two days before break. Welcome back. Happy New Year to everyone here. And certainly, you know, honestly, I'm glad twenty twenty is over. So let's have a new year, and I want to thank Bobby Bagley and welcome our student reps here. We've got a lot to cover in the next six months before we end, and let's start on a positive note. So I don't really have, there wasn't school for the last week and a half, so it's a bunch going on, but certainly when we when we have our next meeting, I'll have more to update the board and public.
Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Mosley, and welcome back and Happy New Year to you and your family. Did anyone have any response to Dr. Mosley's comments, either these or his update earlier regarding the poll? And I apologize for calling it a survey. It was a poll.
It's okay.
Families. No, I just had one question about the poll, and that is, do we have a lot, I guess not a lot, do we have a significant number of outstanding students who we didn't receive a response from their family?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. It all depends on, I said we had ten thousand, so responses. So those is, it was, it basically, I couldn't really tell you, to be honest with you. I just got the results sometime earlier this week. Thank you, Stacy, for for doing that. And if you ask me, you know, the follow-up question, which is a fair one, I can certainly try to get you those numbers. I can't even tell you if it's broken down in terms of grade level, whether it's elementary, middle, or high. I'm deferring to the building principles and starting to make the schedules. We really wanted to start to build a schedule, particularly at the high school, because I was a high school principal. It's going to take extra time to do that because you're you're essentially creating two cohorts, one remote and one in-person, and they wanted to start working on that as soon as possible. But certainly, in terms of outstanding responses, we're still kind of getting that together.
Okay. All right, so I'll wait until our meeting next week to hear from you what that is. Okay. I see, I thought I saw Ms. Ziem's hand and I saw Ms. Johnson's hand. No, Ms. Ziem says no. Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, just one quick question. We also had a poll or survey, however you want to talk, with the teachers and the paraprofessionals, because we were getting emails on that. Is that going to be on our next agenda or, because we had emails coming saying that, and answers to the polls that were sent out to us, and we got many emails about going back to school and not going back to school. So are we going to get an update on that, too?
I don't know what poll, I don't know what poll you're referring to. The only poll that went out was just a parent from the schools.
Well, we got a lot of emails and one me, teachers at the high school, they're talking about, am I seeing my students in person? So I guess there was something else that went out because we got quite a bit of them from paraprofessionals. Some of them were just like one sentence, I don't want to go back to school. They seem like that they were instructed what to write there. So that's what I'm kind of curious about. So if we can then look into it for maybe Monday night and give us an answer as to what this was all about?
I have no idea what you're making reference to. There was only one poll that went out. Are you making, go ahead, Tower.
I believe in the last board meeting, a board member asked, said that they would like to hear from the teachers on their beliefs and what they felt. So that was a direct request to one of the board members.
Thank you. That was me.
So.
No, it was just in a meeting, though, Mrs. Johnson, my fault. I just, at one of the meetings, I I said I would love to hear from the teachers so that we know how you feel about this as well. And I think it's, we have so many that it takes a while for the word to get out there, and truthfully, they don't always get the same word because, you know, they tell each other, and so it's secondhand, sometimes thirdhand. So but there was no survey that I know of.
So this was really just a question, like, what do you want to do? Just an informal survey. And we've got some answers here, but not a lot, but we got it from some paraprofessionals and teachers. So it really doesn't amount to, it amounts, but it doesn't because it wasn't asked by administration for their opinion as to what was going on here to a certain extent. I guess, because we can't really do anything with that information because administration didn't ask for it, so he, so Dr. Mosley can't tally it and get the feedback on it. That's what I'm figuring. Am I correct, Dr. Mosley? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but this is if it's not asked by the administration, just by us.
Last meeting, I believe Ms. Ziem asked the teachers to share their opinion, and they're doing so. But I, and that's going directly to the board. That's why you're getting those emails and commentary from the teachers.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mosley and Ms. Ziem for clearing that up, and thank you to the, I think, hundred people who emailed us. Okay, anybody else with a response for Dr. Mosley? Yep. Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Mosley. The next item on the agenda are our student member of the board comments. So welcome. I try and switch off between you guys so that the same person is not always put on the hot seat to talk first. So this evening I will start with Ms. Brunel, just because I have her name written down first on my sheet, and then we'll go to Mr. Dunn. So go ahead, Ms. Brunel.
And in regards to online tour. And it was in regards to online or hybrid.
Okay, Ms. Brunel, I'm having difficulty hearing you. Try again.
Can you now?
Slightly better. Perhaps if you shut your camera off, it might actually take up less broadband.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, that's much better. I, I wanted to see your face too, but I'd rather.
Much better, much better.
My wife wishes to put somebody in, and my commenting in regards to hybrid and online school.
You can comment on whatever you want. This is your time.
Oh, okay. So I know that many constituents of South are looking forward to going back to hybrid or with the poll that they got excited about because everybody just wants some kind of normalcy. And I believe that I'm in support of hybrid as well, although I don't want to go back. It risks any like, with the health risks, I don't know if it's worth it. So I think that we should work towards getting back to some kind of normalcy. And until then, just keep doing what all we can.
Thank you, Ms. Brunel. I appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us. Mr. Dunn?
Um, a big thing I think, and what I've seen is at the beginning of the year, students and teachers were all excited to see people and people were enthusiastic and more students had their cameras on. And I feel like as we've slowly progressed, it's become less and less enthusiastic. And I feel like it's becoming a little less personal and less motivating. And I mean, as we've seen in the poll, 55% going hybrid, and as we just heard from Mrs. Bagley, it's pretty, it, it's not 100%, but it is safe if we maintain social distancing and we keep six feet and we make sure we don't, aren't roaming the hallways for more than 10 minutes. But I also think that, as in caller number two had said, childcare is a major issue. And people do need to go to work and people do need childcare. And the rates, if we, if we wear masks and if we keep six feet are relatively low, I do think we just need to keep that in mind that we have to be safe, but students want to go back. I know teachers feel less connected lately and childcare is a major issue. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. And I, I'm going to put Ms. Kinsella on the spot to, to make sure that you both have invitations to our Zoom for Monday night's special meeting so that you're able to participate in that meeting as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. So the next item on our agenda, also well done on your very first student member of the board comments. It can be very nerve wracking to speak in public when you know that you're going out on the television. So good job, guys. All right. So we don't have anything for the committee on the budget yet, but I expect that to be getting together soon. Mr. Donovan, within the next four weeks, six weeks?
Yes, probably in the time period.
Okay. All right, committee on finance. I don't have anything. Ms. Oden?
I will say the next meeting is Tuesday, January 12.
Okay. So I will make sure that we have committee assignments before then.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see anything for committee on policy. But we do have meetings scheduled for later this month as well. Let's see. Same thing with curriculum. Ms. Timmons, you said you're going to do HR during new business? Yes, okay. Okay. Does anyone have any liaison reports? Okay, I don't have any. Oh, do we have a JS SBC update? We do not since the last time. Okay. Oh, look, it is on the, the cat, the, see, now I have to eat crow. I see that return to in-person or remote is on our agenda, but I thought that that was just Dr. Mosley's update about the poll. Dr. Mosley, did you think it was something else?
No, I'm shaking my head because I, I saw it on the agenda, but now I, I understand what's kind of going on here a little bit. So it was on the, that's why I thought that, that's part of, part of the reason why we, the board was getting all those emails.
Yes, anyone could have said to me, Heather, you're wrong, read your agenda, and I would not have taken it personally. I really thought we only had the poll on this evening. Do you have anything to present on this topic? My preference would be to wait until next week when we have a meeting specifically to discuss it. Because I feel like it, it's a thorny issue with a lot of things.
I agree with you, Ms. Raymond.
Okay. I do see Ms. Bishop waving her hand at me. Ms. Bishop, you can tell me to read the agenda too. It's acceptable.
No, I read it as us return to in-person or remote. The Board of Ed.
The Board of Ed. Oh, okay.
Lots of words make things easier to understand.
Tchae, Ms. Bishop, tchae.
I apologize, everybody. This is not.
I made the same mistake. I, I read it real quickly. I thought it was the same thing you did. So I, I was with you on that one.
Um, okay. Um, regarding.
We can do that.
Okay. Regarding the Board of Education returning to North or remaining virtual meetings, I've said before, I think we need to have at least six members able to physically be in the building in order to run the meeting physically from North. That way we can make sure that we have a quorum and we don't have to cancel last minute. ETV has informed me more than one time that we can't go back and forth. This is a decision that we make and then we stick with it and they need a couple of weeks lead time. So we couldn't vote to return for Monday because they need to move equipment around. They also apparently use some of the same equipment for the alderman and it has been, I've been requested to coordinate us returning into person with the alderman's plans to return in person. But I don't, I don't know how viable that is or palatable to this board. So what I'd like to do is use my little chartie chart and have everybody kind of have an opportunity to say what they want, but also indicate if you're physically able to come in person at the current time. Because I don't know who's under quarantine, like what issues we've got going on. So I'm just picking off from our last meeting. And so Ms. Timmons, you're first. Oh, I can't hear you, Ms. Timmons.
You're muted.
Oh, that that you're referring to? That you held up? What?
Oh, yeah. This is just a thing that I typed up myself with everyone's name.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So that, and it goes, like, we started with Ms. Bishop first, and then I started the next time with Ms. Brown first. And, you know, so that everyone gets a chance to speak and it's not always the same person speaking first. Okay. Does that make sense? It was one of the things that the School Board Association suggested we do when everybody had something to say to make it.
Okay, I understand.
More equitable. If you don't want to go first, I can come back to you.
Go first.
Okay.
So my answer would be no.
Okay. Did you want to say anything else?
Not until the uptick in, in COVID and what I've seen does not warrant going back to, I'm not me, anyway, going back to in-person. In-person in the board. I, I can't do that right now.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Zim?
Well, I, I emailed the board that I am currently under restriction. On Wednesday of last week, I had a coffee with a family member. And that day he got feeling bad, went to the hospital and was diagnosed with COVID. He immediately called me and so I did not go out of the house until Saturday when I went and had, went, you have to wait three to five days before you can be tested for the COVID after being exposed. So what I did was I went over to the Hudson Emergency Care and they told me that the rapid test was coming back negative. That I, and they were very thorough. They checked everything, my heart, my breathing, my lungs. Was very impressive, actually. Again, our community, I think we're very lucky. We have some wonderful community. Having said that, right now, if you ask me, like this week, we have a couple of meetings at the high school. Unless I get the final, they, they send a second one, which is the longer test, which is, I suppose, more accurate according to the statistics. I guess the, the rapid tests can be wrong. Forty percent of the time is the figure I've heard, whether that's, I didn't ask Mrs. Bagley. I should have asked her tonight, shouldn't I? So I could not go back. And, and I have to tell you, I also have a struggle with, there are members on our board. I would like to go back in person. It's who I am. I, I miss, I miss the camaraderie. I miss getting to know the board members. I miss the interaction, the personal. Having said that, I, I do not think it's my place to tell any of my other board members who are, who feel their risk is high and who are afraid of going back. I don't think it's my place to make them go back. I, I have to tell you that in my heart, I can't do that. I miss my help, but I'm not willing to be responsible for any of the others. So, so unfortunately, as much as I would like to see us go back, I, I just don't think the time right now is right. I'm hoping that after we get the shots and, and when these figures start going down, then we can all go back to some normalcy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zim. Ms. Bishop?
Um, I'm going to say what I, what I think I've said the last couple of times that this has come up is, is it does feel a bit hypocritical to be sending students and teachers back into school for hybrid and us not being together for the meetings. However, I think in the schools, we've done a lot of work to get the tools that they need and to do things safely where we haven't done that for us. We don't have screens up for us. We don't really have any kind of protection in place for public comment. And, you know, still, I'm still working and noticing a lot of people, you know, they say they're safe and they're, they're doing COVID precautions. And from a hospital standpoint, they really aren't. So I don't know if we could just line people up to do public comment and, and just take it on their word that they're appropriate and safe. So I think that there are too many, there are too many factors, including not having enough board members to actually have the meeting appropriately. Because who knows which one of us is going to get sick and not be able to be there to, to round out the, the amount of seats that need to be present for a public meeting. And we run into risks of administration not being able to be there. So I want to say yes, I, I miss everybody and second what Ms. Zim is saying, but I don't think we have the resources for the board to go back in like we do with the schools. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Ms. Brown?
So to partially follow up on what Ms. Bishop said, I also agree that we should be in, meeting in person for those of us who can make it and those of us who can't, we can dial at least four of us in on phone and still meet our legal requirements. I think we could also even have a Zoom computer into the room should we want to, put it on and put that feed into the screen for ETV. And I'm looking at, I think the reason we chose the 19th as the return to school for the hybrid learning was because that was giving people time to essentially quarantine, be home after break. So that's another two weeks away from today. As well as we do have people in our community that are getting more, more vaccines. So that stuff is going to go through over the next few weeks here. We're going to start seeing a lower chances of transmission as that becomes more popular. And I'm looking at our chart, our next full board meeting is actually not until the 25th. So that gives us one, two, three weeks of of essential, of essentially more isolation and quarantining for our board members, for the commit, for the community. I think we can come up with a quality plan between now and then for social distancing because six feet apart and masks does work to keep transmitting. As we heard from Bobby Bagley, we can do the dots on the floor. All that said, I think that it's worth a shot to go ahead and go back into the, go back in the building for our meetings and I move that we move, we return to in-person board meetings on, beginning on January 25.
I'll second it.
Point of order without getting everybody's feedback, you're just going to make a motion to do that?
Yes, it's completely acceptable for her to make a motion during her time.
Right.
So we can, we, we were allowing discussion without a motion. Certainly we can have a motion and continue discussion. I would think that everyone should have an opportunity to speak though before we take the vote. I just think that's fair. So, and it looks like Ms. Brown is nodding to that. She's got no intention of cutting anybody off. So, okay. So I just want to make sure that I have it down right. The motion is to return to in-person meetings on 1/25/21, and it was seconded by Ms. Johnson. Okay. Okay, did that conclude your comments, Ms. Brown?
Yes. If anybody's got any questions about what I mentioned, I'm happy to answer a follow-up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I, if this board votes to go in person, I will probably be calling in. I have been working remotely. And when, I've done a lot of things. I still do a lot of things. Like I go to the grocery store, but I work from home. In fact, I was at, I was handing out lunches at Dr. Crisp for a while back. You know, but I have people that are close to me who tell me I take too many chances. They don't want me to take those chances. And the reason why they tell me that is because I'm in a high-risk category. I'm 67 years old. And I think that Ms. Zim made some very good points about us telling other, other people on this board who have underlying conditions that they have to go in, in person. I understand that it is, it is really, there's, there's advantages to looking people in the eye and being around together rather than working remote, but we're under, we're under duress. Everybody's been under duress. Our teachers are teaching remotely under duress and it's not easy, but I will not be supporting this because, for the reasons that Ms. Zim had stated. And if, if it does pass, I will be, I'll be calling in and attending the meetings remotely if I could. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Ms. Giglio?
Okay, um, before I start, I just want to notice that it's almost eight o'clock at night. And so normally we've met now for two hours and is this the point at which we have to vote to extend the meeting?
We started our meeting this evening at 6:34.
Oh, that's right. Okay, we were here earlier. Okay, that's fine.
31, I forget. I didn't write it down. I should have.
That's fine. I, I kept thinking we started at six, but that was just the other meeting. Okay. I would like nothing better than to meet in person. I think that the length of our meetings are really long meetings are a result of meeting on Zoom. I also think that we would have fewer arguments if we were in person and looking each other in the eye. However, I am 71 years old. I am a cancer survivor. I have respiratory problems and asthma. And I am in the 1B category and I look forward to getting my vaccination as soon as I possibly can and following up with a second one. And then when I feel safe, I will be happy to meet in person with our board and also with the public when it's safe to do that. But for right now, my vote would be no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giglio. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I'm going to support going back and I've been the one who started this whole thing, I think. First of all, I'm in the risk category on 67. I've got fibromyalgia, which I have immune compromised system here. First of all, I'm in the risk category on sixty-seven. I've got fibromyalgia, which I have immune compromised system here. I've been back to work, although some people might think retail is lower class than any other, uh, job, but it puts food on the table and a roof over my head. And I've been working with the public since June. I wear my mask even though I hate wearing it because I can't breathe with it because I got asthma and I can't breathe with it. But I go to work all the time and I do what I have to do. I think for us not to be a public body, being out there back in the public eye, I'm sure there are ways that we can make sure we are safe. If we have four members that aren't there, then our horseshoe will permit us to sit around at a social distancing six feet apart. Um, I think that we could do something with the community, maybe have them go into the auditorium and have them six feet apart to talk to us. Um, because you can, um, record from the auditorium. That's where we got sworn in. And I'm sure we can try to see if we can do something, um, with, um, the TV, with the people. Um, I think that when budget is coming up, it's gonna be very hard to remote doing that budget. Those are long hours. We have presentations. I shut off my camera a lot because I can't, I, I understand when the students say they can't focus on Zoom and they lose their attention. I have to shut the camera off sometimes because it's just too much for my eyes and my brain to function with Zooming. We have a lot of hard tasks to come up with, coming down. And for us not to be there and working as a team, and I understand people have health issues and, and like even with going back into the classrooms, the family members and the students that have health issues and we remote them. The ones that can go back into the classroom, you bring them back into the classroom. I mean, it can work if we work to make it work, but it seems like we don't make it wanna work. It's one way or the highway. And so I've been arguing about us getting back in there. Believe me, I hate going out in the cold because the cold weather with my fibromyalgia kills me. And I don't talk about my health issues very often, but I do have them. And it's nobody's business except my business with them. But I feel at this point in time, if we can get six people or even five people, which five makes the quorum, basically, does five make the quorum? Five and four is nine, yes. And we can get five people to get in there. We can socially distance around the horseshoe and administration if need be can be sitting in the seats above us in the auditorium seats. I mean, it can work if we design it to make it work. And I think we're at the point now, when that budget comes, it was hard enough last year trying to finish up that budget remoting. And it's gonna be even harder because this is gonna be a tough year on how much money we're really gonna have to work with and what we're gonna really have to do to sit down and get everything going here. So my vote is we put the masks on, we social distance, X marks the spot where we can be. Let's make, have Ms. Bagley come in and kinda take a look at everything and tell us what we need to do. And we'll go from there. But for us not to do this, I think it's wrong at this point in time. So I will vote yes to get back in public. Um,
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Um, Ms. Oden?
Thank you. First, I wanna re, say I respect every member's position, whether it's the same of mine or different. We all have different feelings and different, different, uh, opinions on this. I will say I would like to go back. I, uh, I am in the high-risk category for a couple of reasons. But I think wearing a mask and there's room to stay six feet away in that room, uh, whether it's in the boardroom or in the auditorium. Uh, and I would support it, but I, I, I will say it will not make meetings any shorter because if people are calling in on the phone, you still have to do the, the roll call. Uh, so it, it's not gonna be short, but I think for me, I would prefer meeting in person in the boardroom. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Oden. I think everyone has had a chance to speak on this issue. Um, Dr. Mosley? Did you have a comment? No, okay, sorry. Um, I thought he was, he was speaking. Okay. Anybody else? No? Okay. Um, Ms. Bishop, can you call the roll please on the motion? Um, to return to in-person meetings for the Board of Education, um, uh, starting with the meeting on January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay. Uh, Jen Bishop votes no. Oh, sorry, I was just stopped there. Uh, Sharon Gilio?
No.
Heather Raymond?
Uh, no.
Dottie Oden?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Ray Guarino?
No.
Sandra Zim?
No.
And Gloria Timmons?
No.
So that is six noes and three yeses. The noes have it.
All right, thank you, everybody. Um, I'm certain that we will continue to revisit this question as we move forward. Um, this isn't a forever answer. This is a for now answer. Um, so, um, we will keep bringing it up as we move on. Okay, so, um, the next item on the agenda is new business. Um, and, um, the first item is the personnel recommendations, um, for today, January fourth, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, Ms. Timmons?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Um, I'd like to make a motion to move to approve personnel recommendation dated January fourth, twenty-twenty-one. It was in your packet when you got it this past week. It's only three, um, recommendations on the agenda.
Second.
Oh, my, everyone wants to second it. I heard Dottie first. Okay, does anyone have any comments or questions? Um, no, okay. Um, so when you are ready, Ms. Bishop, could you call the roll on, uh, Ms. Timmons's motion?
I know Ray has a really cool piece of paper that has all the stuff written down. It's like, keep trying to do it really quickly.
Yeah, and take the time that you need. We understand. We, you're thrown into this tonight. You don't have all of the paperwork that, um, and charts and such to help, so.
Well, speed and efficiency are my favorite things, so.
So Jen Bishop votes yes. Um, Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Heather Raymond?
Yes.
Dottie Oden?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Ray Guarino?
Yes.
Eight, number eight, Sandra Zim?
Yes.
And Gloria Timmons?
Yes.
That is nine yeses. Okay. All right, thank you very much. Anything else, Ms. Timmons?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. And, um, thank you for being flexible with the HR committee meeting tonight. Um, I appreciated that. Okay, so, um, the next item on the agenda is approval of the Board of Education twenty-twenty-one, um, meeting schedule. Uh, Ms. Kinsella was kind enough to include in our packets, um, all of the meetings for the whole year. Um, so I'm looking for a motion to approve, um, this meeting schedule that was in our packets. Um, knowing that as we move forward, um, individual chairs can reschedule meetings um, if there is a pressing need to do so, um, as long as, you know, they talk to their committee and administration um, about doing that before they move it so that we can get it on the calendar. Um, usually administration needs a little bit of notice, um, and some discussion. Okay, um, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the Board of Education, uh, twenty-twenty-one meeting schedule.
They're moved.
No, I have a question about the, um, meeting as February.
Okay, hold on, hold on one second.
Me also.
Okay, so first, I heard Ms. Bishop make the motion and Ms. Gilio seconded it. And then Ms. Timmons has a question and then Ms. Brown has a question, correct?
Right.
Okay, um, so, do you have that down? Okay. Um, move ahead, Ms. Timmons. Thank you for your patience.
I'm sorry. Normally we don't meet on, on school breaks. There's a meeting in February, um, for winter break. Um,
What do I do with it?
It's behind the January schedule, February.
No, I just, I moved it on my desk after holding it up and then I couldn't find it because it's a Monday. I'm having a Monday. So, um, yes, you're correct. We have the Board of Education meeting and the HR committee meeting. Usually we let administration have that week off because it's a vacation. Um, Dr. Mosley, do you have any comments or thoughts on that?
I would prefer not. Typically, that's the time we have off, so I would just stay away from that.
I noticed that we also have a meeting that second week of March. Um, do you think we could cancel the second meeting in February and just have those items on the first meeting in March?
Yeah.
Or do you think that would be?
I think that'd be great. I think that's a, a sacrosanct week because I know a lot of people like to ski and do some things with their family on that time. And I'm not a skier, but I know that, um, Ms. Bishop likes to take advantage of that particular week without saying too much.
So.
May I make another suggestion, an alternative suggestion to that?
Okay.
If we, instead of canceling that meeting, um, because we've, we're gonna try to get, I think we are gonna try to get into a pattern of having kind of a planning meeting and then like the policies and so we could organize our meetings better. So to get out of a habit of that so early in the calendar year, I think may be a mistake. Um, maybe we consider bumping the curriculum meeting to late in the week, like Wednesday or Thursday of, um, the tenth or eleventh. And then we can just move the meeting on the twenty-second to the fifteenth.
That, I like that idea, except that, um, it doesn't give, um, administration enough time to get the minutes and the materials from that meeting, um, copied and distributed in our packets. Right, right.
Yep.
The, the material, the agenda is set the Tuesday before the meeting. So the sixteenth is the cutoff for getting things onto the agenda. And then, um, the support staff, um, Ms. Kinsella and Ms. Bernardo do all their photocopying and, um, the minutes are all done on the Wednesday and the Thursday so that the packets can. Right, right. So.
And we, we are having a meeting March the eighth, so that's shortly after, um, winter break.
Agreed. We could potentially have it the Monday after winter break. Like.
And then have, and then take the eighth off? I think that's too soon after winter break.
Okay, I mean, tonight.
I would not prefer that.
Vacation mode.
I just think that, um, the only, the meeting on the, in February should just be canceled for that week because the school break and the calendar is fine after that.
Could we do it on the eighteenth of February?
Again, we won't have, the purpose of the second meeting is to do the committee work and we won't have the information from the committees. Um, the, we have to wait for the minute again. Um, and that takes usually three days.
Could, I have one more suggestion. Could we can tentatively move that meeting to the seventeenth or eighteenth? And then maybe move the policy and curriculum meetings both up to the week of the eighth sometime. I realize that gives us three committee meetings in one week, but it would give time to make the photocopies and get that committee, that, um, that meeting taken care of.
Okay. Um, Ms. Gilio?
Yeah, um, I'm just looking at the calendar and I don't know when the JSSBC meetings are for next year. But generally speaking, they're like the last Thursday of the month and they wouldn't hold it in February during winter break. So I highly suspect that there will be that meeting on the eighteenth, which does not leave some of us available to attend both meetings simultaneously.
Yes, and that's a, that's a majority of us that wouldn't be able to attend both meetings. Also, um, I forgot and it's not on here, but generally, um, as soon as Mr. Donovan and Dr. Mosley, um, are ready with, um, their proposed superintendent's, um, budget, uh, when Mr., I'm sorry, when Dr. Mosley is ready to present his superintendent's budget, um, we start having budget meetings every Wednesday.
Right.
Um, starting usually the beginning of February and lasting until June. Okay, so Dottie had asked to speak and also Ms. Johnson.
Thank, thank you, uh, Ms. Freeman. Um, I, uh, I have some concerns with the HR meeting being scheduled the same night as the board meeting. For one thing, it starts at the dinner hour. Uh, we are in a cycle where we're going to be doing a superintendent search. Uh, I think we need to have a separate night. We had always had that in the past. I think that we need to have a separate night for our HR committee meetings rather than, uh, placing it right before the board meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I mean, in February, is there gonna be anything really important that we might have to go through because we're gonna have a week off? But March has five weeks, so you could always change the Board of Ed meeting to the first and then change it to the fifteenth and then you have the twenty-ninth. It would be three meetings in one month. Or just forget it and unless there's anything really important pressing, because we're just starting off the new year. Maybe just skip it or put it, we'll have three meetings in March because we have, or two meetings in March. We'll have the still, the two meetings. The first, the fifteenth or the twenty-ninth, and the twenty-ninth will be three. It would be three, but it'll be the, that enough time in between. I say get rid of the meeting in February, just not unless we absolutely need it. One less meeting, we'll all be on break and we all can go skiing and be socially distanced with our masks on.
Okay, so.
And our goggles and our face shields, you know, going down the hill.
All right, so I think it, it sounds like we have two items up for discussion right now. Um, I'd like to, I'm gonna make this formal. I move to, um, amend the motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one Board of Ed calendar, um, to cancel, um, the February twenty-second, um, meetings. If anyone would like to.
Second.
Okay.
Sharon?
Sharon was waving. Ms. Zim said it loudly. I'm gonna give it to Ms. Zim.
Down to my superior board member.
All right, and so I think Ms. Timmons wanted to respond to the HR meeting question?
No, I don't wanna respond to the calendar itself.
Okay.
Kinsella put together that calendar and she must have spent some time doing that. And perhaps we can get her logics behind it and then we can have a more, um, intelligent vote or more informative vote.
So you are correct that traditionally we have not had, um, a meeting during any of the vacation weeks. Um, I went back and for the past two years, for some odd reason, we have had it during February break. Not sure why, uh, maybe because it is a busy time of year with, um, uh, budget and other things. So I left it on there, but it's certainly, we can certainly remove it. It's not a, it's not, um, it, this, the calendar has to be somewhat fluid, um, but I did stick to the traditional format uh, because we found over the last couple of years trying to tweak it here and there, it kinda throws everything else off. So that, um, format seemed to work, so we went back to it, but we can remove a meeting. It's, it's not a, it's not an issue. Thank you, Mrs. Timmons.
Now I'd like to speak on the HR committee meeting.
Okay, go ahead.
Why we changed that meeting. One, it's usually short, less than a half an hour. Secondly, we have, uh, at one point had so many meetings in one week, it was easier just to do that half an hour prior to the board meeting. That was the logic behind that. I just wanted you to know. It made sense. It cut one day out of the week that we didn't have to meet.
Okay, Ms. Zim, did you wish to speak?
Well, I just, I, 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 I respectfully agree with Mrs. Oden. I remember that you can make every meeting shorter. I mean, when it all. you can make every meeting shorter. I mean, when it only has a, a 20-minute or a 30-minute timeframe, you make it fit. But when you're interviewing people, uh, I don't know, I, I, I guess because I've never seen it done that way and I, I was very comfortable with the other way. So I guess I would have to agree with Mrs. Oden. I would like to see it go back to its own timeframe. Thank you, but no offense intended.
Fairly speaking.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Ms. Kinsella, do you recall what day of the week was the traditional, um, HR committee day?
It was always, always the Wednesday or Thursday prior to the last board meeting of the month. So.
Okay.
I believe it was Thursdays because of budget was Wednesday nights, so. But.
Okay. So do people feel strongly about moving it or shall we wait for the new, um, Chair of the HR Committee or existing Chair of the HR Committee, whoever is in charge of HR, moving into 2021, uh, to discuss that with the, with the members and then perhaps, um, ask for a change at that point. Ms. Gilio?
Hi, um, I found it to work out very well because, um, all of, there are no interviews during that part of it. All of the interviews have been happened, have already happened. Um, positions have been offered and we get a list of everyone that has either resigned or has accepted a new position. And all we're doing at our meeting, which generally takes only 20 minutes, is, um, going over that. Now again, I would love to be on that committee again, but I may not be assigned to it. Um, but I found that that worked pretty well and when we are meeting in person again, it, it might be, I don't know, not a pain, but leaving your house and driving somewhere that takes you 10 or 15 minutes to get there and sit down for 15 or 20 minutes for a meeting and then to get back in your car and go home. I think it's more fuel efficient if we combine it with the regular meeting, but, um, maybe we should just wait until the new committee is established and let them decide. That's my thought.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Ms. Zim?
And that's, that's a good thought. But the question I would have though is, uh, with superintendent search coming up. In, in the past, when we did the superintendent searches, uh, they were, they tended to be lengthy in my, as I remember, and they tend to be, uh, we had quite a few. And I, so will those, will those interviews come through this committee and, uh, are we going to do that on a separate? So maybe in that regard, it's better just to wait and see who's going to be the Chair, but, but you hear what I'm saying. The, the interview, the interviewing of the superintendent candidates could, could could complicate it and make it mu- a much busier, at least that's what, that's how I remember it anyway. No. I'm asking, I'm not telling you, I'm asking what everybody thinks.
Um, I know, other than Ms. Oden, I don't think there are a lot of board members here who have been through that process, um, before. Um, personally, I was planning on relying heavily on, um, the administrators who have experienced it and also, um, our attorney. Uh, Ms. Kinsella?
I believe last time we created an ad hoc and it was a committee of the whole. When we got to the point where we had finalists to bring forward.
Was it done, Mrs. Kinsella, as a committee meeting or was it done as a totally different thing and it created its own schedule?
It did create its own schedule and it did not fall under HR.
Great, thank you. Okay. Any other discussion on the calendar? All right, so, um, my notes show that we have, um, an amendment to vote on regarding cancelling, um, the 22nd of February meeting. And then, um, a primary motion to vote on, um, regarding approving the calendar as a whole. So, um, Ms. Bishop, when you're ready on the amendment? Okay, and I apologize for my children giggling in the next room like little monsters. I enjoyed it.
You did too. It makes, makes me feel. You're at home. There's no way you can avoid it.
Mm-hmm. They're, they're good. They keep making fun of me because the wifi is horrible and I obviously am doing something wrong, so they're just, and they're making fun of me. Just fine. Okay, so on the amendment to cancel February 22nd meeting, uh, Jen Bishop votes yes. Um, Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Heather Raymond?
Um, yes.
Dottie Oden?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Ray Guarino?
No.
Uh, Sandra Zim?
Yes.
And Gloria Timmons? Should we all say it together? You're on mute. Oh, I say yes. Okay. Okay, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six. Eight yeses and one no. The yeses have it.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to change my vote to a yes, just might as well make it unanimous.
All right.
If that's possible. Thank, thank you.
I can do that.
Okay.
Okay. So motion passes. Okay. Um, and now on the motion to approve the calendar in its entirety. Yes. So Jen Bishop votes yes. Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Heather Raymond?
Yes.
Dottie Oden?
No.
Oh, okay. Five. Jessica Brown?
I abstain.
Okay. Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Ray Guarino? Right?
I have to be off mute, right? Yes.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry.
Um, Sandra Zim?
No.
And Gloria Timmons?
Yes.
So we have one, two, three, four, five, six yeses. Two no's and one abstention. So the yeses have it. Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, this is exciting. I started filling out my planner and I only went until the beginning of February and now I can fill it out the rest of the year. I love that. Um, okay, so, um, next item on our agenda is the approval of the 2021, 2022 School District Calendar, um, which is in our packets. Um, so I'm looking for a motion to approve, um, the 2021, 2022 School Calendar.
I move to send the calendar to the Curriculum Evaluation, Evaluation Committee for further review.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Hold on one second, just while I write it down. Right, can you speak to your motion, um, Ms. Brown?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So I think there's several items of concern on, uh, the calendar, which we haven't had the opportunity to discuss uh, or comment on before, um, it got sent out to our packages, packages this week. We've got, we're negotiating contracts and it's always challenging to pass a ca- a calendar and then go back and try to alter it for staff, teachers, families later after they've already made their plans. Um, we also need to evaluate our snow days versus remote days moving forward for next semesters. I think that actually is something that might probably will need to be addressed with the, uh, Policy Committee. Um, I think there should be some considerations for moving our half-days from Wednesdays to Fridays. Um, I think there's some potential that it could be better served for both teachers and students as they wouldn't have to have an extra transitional day midweek. And I think there's a lot of families now that have modified work schedules that work a four-day work week or a, um, every other Friday off in which they could probably maintain easier, um, childcare opportunities if we were to move those half-days to Fridays for the, um, early releases for the teacher professional development. So I think that could benefit and the teachers won't have to have essentially an extra transition day for kids. Um, so all of these reasons, I think that there is more discussion and I think it's getting pretty late tonight. I think there's some things that we need to face with both policy and curriculum-based items that I think are relevant to the calendar for next year before approval.
Okay, thank you, uh, Ms. Brown. Um, Dr. Mosley? Um, I'd like to hear your thoughts on this. Um, and also, Dr. McKinney, not to put you on the spot, um, but given that curriculum is your committee. And I'm confused, so, um, Dr. Mosley, you want to be on the hotspot first?
Yeah, I, I just, um, this is something that's new. That's, um, a couple of things when we're talking about professional development. Um, but that half-day, I agree with that sentiment, uh, that the half-days don't work. I think we are not the most productive, sorry. But I also, before we start talking about that, I think it's important that we're in contract negotiations right now and that can also be addressed, uh, through, I think it's always been that school day versus people, that school day versus people days and that's a discussion that the district has had for quite some time. Uh, the other things that, that come to mind a little bit, um, when you talk about snow days versus school days and how that can be handled. All that can be talked about in an MOU with a, with, with the teachers. I think the bigger picture here is that we like to start to approve, uh, the calendar right now because many of our families are starting to plan some form of vacation or some type of, um, accommodation for their, their families. So we try to get that out as well. Also, teachers are starting to plan as well and sometimes the way, the way the calendar works, that, um, Labor Day, that Labor Day weekend sometimes can be a little tricky. I think there's some, some curriculum pieces, you know, certainly, uh, I think that it, it's always, um, I, I'm, I'm not sure the, the correlation between the curriculum and the calendar. It's always been, um, something that, you know, the calendar ha- has been separate to that. So I'm, I'm a little bit bemused as well, Ms. Raymond, on, on this, this, um, the, the, this motion. Um, it's, it's the, to get the calendar out as soon as possible, it just really helps us, the schools, the families, um, these, uh, daycare organizations to start to plan accordingly.
Um, thank you, Dr. Mosley. Um, do we have any other, um, thoughts from, um, Dr. McKinney or Mr. Parker? Dr. McKinney?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, and I actually would like, um, Ms. Kinsella to have a moment to speak to this because um, this is a matter of a routine and we go through the calendar process every year. Um, and putting this together does put us in alignment with the understandings that are in contracts. The NTU looks at it, the principals have looked at it, district office has looked at it. We try to solidify dates ahead of time for professional development. Um, new teacher orientation, summer admin institute, all of this has, uh, been done this way for a number of years. So uh, I'd ask you to keep all those things in mind, but, um, and also I ask that you allow Ms. Kinsella to share the process uh, that was put in to developing this calendar. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Ms., uh, thank you, Dr. McKinney. Um, Mr. Parker, I couldn't see you. Um, did you have anything to say before I go to Ms. Kinsella? No, okay, go ahead, Ms. Kinsella.
So Dr. McKinney is accurate. It is a process that we, and it's been traditional that, um, we have done it by February of, uh, the school year so that families can plan. Um, due to COVID, I've already had multiple calls. Um, people want to book those flights. They want out. Um, and I can't say as I blame them. So that's kind of a sideline piece to it, but he's right. We do have to, the first day of school is critical for the summer camps to know. It's critical for, um, some of our, uh, professional development to be aligned. Um, it's not to say that, and our contract negotiations could take quite a bit of time, um, and, and there's quite a few of them. Um, it's not to say that an amendment or a revisement cannot be made to this calendar. But it is good to get a, um, uh, somewhat of a, uh, framework, um, and a first day of school lined up, um, as well as professional development, so.
Thank you, Ms. Kinsella. Ms. Johnson?
I hate to say assume, I'll say presume, but this calendar is based on going back to school full-time come August. Okay, and this calendar, um, where we, we have makeup days or like snow days, would we, instead of, um, having snow days, just remove the students from school now versus the snow days? So I mean, this is, this is why I voted for it to go to committee for unanswered questions like this. Rather than taking time up at the full board, this is something more like a committee um, work in progress, just to get the questions answered and to tie us up at the full board right now the rest of the night. So I guess would these students then be remote if they had to have snow days?
I, I'll just, if we can, that can all be discussed at a, you know, for us to do this right here, we have to have a, a conversation, a dialogue with the NTU and the union. I think it's important that the parents and teachers and community members look at the schedule because they actually start, to Ms. Kinsella's point, planning their vacations right now. It's cheaper to buy a ticket to, I don't know, California, I'm just making it up, right now than it is to wait six months from now. If you delay the calendar, you're going to start to get constructive feedback from the public around when the calendar is going to be published because people want to, um, plan accordingly. To Mr. Doc, Dr. McKinney's point, sometimes you will, even when we're planning professional development, uh, we have to start booking those people now, if not within the month, because their punch, their dance card fills up very, very quickly. So, um, in, in some cases, Tara, I think what we did maybe last year, uh, actually, some of the members were here. I think we did two, a two-year calendar, correct? Yeah, I think, because that's how pe- people just loved and this is, this has been a seamless, um, process uh, because it's been done timely and, but if we start to mess with it now, it could cause some concerns down the road. So I, I'll, I'll defer to the board how, how it wants to proceed.
And I'm not trying to knock the calendar or say that it's no good. What I'm just trying to do is because I'm seeing that this is all based on before we turn to school. So that means the teachers, the staff, um, for professional development, that they have to travel or be, that this is all based on in-person right now. That's what I'm saying.
That's the plan, absolutely.
Right, and when you're saying people traveling, that's a good sign, you know, because people are looking forward that this whole thing is going to end. Okay, so that answers a lot of my questions. Thank you very much for taking the time and getting this done. Thank you.
Madam President?
Mute. Yes, Dr. McKinney. And then, uh, Mr. Guarino, next.
Uh, I guess I would just add three things. Uh, one, this is a a scaffold or a working skeleton for next year. So beginning with this in place doesn't prevent any other changes. Two, to the conversation around snow days, remote learning. We're under an emergency rule right now, so returning to the previous rule that was in place would require, uh, probably a policy to be put in place and some negotiations with the NTU. We can't just have these remote learning days like we have this year. So it would look a little different. Um, and subsequent work would have to be done, uh, with that as well. And third, um, many years ago, I was a kindergarten parent and I think we've all been there. If kindergarten registration coming and the parents ask, what's the school year calendar? And that's next month. So just keep that in mind as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney. Um, sorry, Mr. Guarino first, um, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, um, no, no disrespect to, um, the motion, the motion and the person that made the motion to send it to committee. Because I'm, I'm always, uh, for doing things in committee, but I'm not going to support holding up the calendar. Because I, I believe that, uh, staff put a lot of work into this, a lot of thought into this. And there's a lot of stuff that we don't see. A lot of work that they do that we don't see and a lot of thought, uh, behind that, that we're not necessarily privy to. So I think for the sake of consistency, stability and just playing what to expect, what, what parents and, and staff, what they can expect. I don't think we should hold up the calendar. I, I think our board should be more streamlined. Um, for lack of a better word, I think we need to be more streamlined and get more things done quicker. So I'm not going to support the, uh, the motion to send it to committee.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Guarino. How, anybody who hasn't spoken, wish to speak on this motion? Okay, oh, Ms. Gilio?
Okay, um, speaking as.
Okay, um, speaking as, as a parent, now a grandparent and a former educator, the calendar coming out in, in January is always a very exciting time. You really get to plan, you know, your next year, and I think like Mrs. Johnson, this year is going to be even more important because I do think people are gonna be looking at, oh, when's school vacation, um, you know, we finally can do this trip to Hawaii, or wherever we were planning to go and didn't get. So I, I know for planning purposes, it's, it's a very exciting time and, and I'm perfectly comfortable with how it looks now, knowing that if we need to make amendments as the year goes on, we can do that. So I support it as is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Dr. McKinney, I think the, the biggest question for me was regarding professional development and about the snow days. Are those items individually that could be taken up by the curriculum committee between now and, I don't know, September? As far as the discussion about, does the board need to take any action to improve professional development? And what steps does the board need to take if we want to look at, like the blizzard bag idea? Or is that, should they go something, or should, like, I don't know where they go? I guess is where I'm going.
I guess two things. I, I always welcome the board's help and support with professional development. The the day, the full in-service days would need to go before the professional development master plan committee and get their advice first before coming to CNE. In regards to the blizzard bags, that is something that could be done in CNE and brought forth at a later date. We need clarification from the state when they would be lifting the emergency use of that provision right now and then returning to the previous rule around how many students complete the work during that day and how we would manage that in terms of using technology, Chromebook distribution, all that, and probably the most likely consult with the NTU. So the answer to your question, the calendar could move ahead, and then I'm happy to provide updates on those two other things at any time.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney. Okay, um, we are two hours. I'd like to conclude this item and then take our vote at the, about continuing. Ms. Brown?
So I think it's pretty clear that my motion's gonna fail, but I think I need to make a couple more of the points that I would have made had this been sent to committee, so I'm gonna go ahead and make my arguments now. Number one, the February break that was listed on our calendar does not align with the state break, recommended break. It doesn't, well, there's no state requirement, but on the state website, it's listed that it should be recommended the 21st to the 25th. However, on our calendar, it's the 28th through the first week of March. I don't know if that aligns with Massachusetts break, but I don't, we typically stick with the New Hampshire break, so there's, I don't know if there's a reason for that, and so I am actually going to speak now from my parent perspective and advocate that mid-week half-days, they are really hard, whether you're a stay-at-home mom, whether you're a working parent, whether you are a a part-time employee, a mid-week shakeup of your schedule is really difficult to manage when you have to worry about changing your kid's schedule. Additionally, I'd like to advocate for kids who have a difficult time transitioning because you essentially give them two Mondays in a week. You have to give them a Monday on Monday and a Monday on Thursday. I just think that mid-week half-days are not good for kids or parents. So that's my piece on that. But is there a reason that we are not aligned with the recommended calendar for the state? For the February vacation for next season?
Tara, yes, there is actually. There's a good reason, and I shall defer to Tara.
So, it was what did I say? March is a really long month. So, moving it to the far end of February, which it typically is, it's typically not the third week of February, moving it to the far, the far end of February and into March makes March for a much shorter month. I, I know that a couple of the administration were very happy to see that, and I, I mean, school administrators that review the calendar, a couple of the principals, as well as the union was kind of happy to see that March would be a shorter month. That's, you know, that's, can be negotiable, but that's, it's, that's not a tipping point for the calendar, if, if you want that one week adjusted. Did you check Massachusetts?
Yeah, I, I think that's the question, and we prefer not to have the same break as Massachusetts.
Correct.
Sorry, everyone at home, but people in New Hampshire do not want to have the same vacation as people in Massachusetts.
Well, I mean, I think that goes to the ski industry, right?
I'm not a skier, but.
And tourism makes a lot more money for our state when we don't have the same week as Massachusetts.
I think that helps too, Ms. Raymond.
Yep. So, Ms. Odin wanted to speak, and I see Ms. Zeeem. And Dr. McKinney?
I just wanted to say, I remember years ago, I can't remember if it was in the early 90s, somewhere around 93, 94, we did schedule our vacation the same week as Massachusetts, and we had so many complaints that we had to change it, and it had to do with the ski areas. The ski areas are mobbed when Massachusetts has their vacation, and it's less crowded when New Hampshire schedules their own, so I would recommend that we do not schedule it the same week as Massachusetts, and I think Ms. Cancelo is right, March is a long month, so I, I don't have a problem at all with us having the vacation, the opposite of Massachusetts and going into March. Thank you.
Ms., wait, Ms. Zeeem?
The incident that Mrs. Odin is speaking about, I remember it well because we, it was a, it was a nightmare. We had so many people come and complain, and it just was, it was really very difficult. But in addition to that, I'm sure the New Hampshire, the ski industry, you know, they like to split up the and, and have two, two vacations that they can cater to everybody and have enough room for everybody. From my perspective though, I used to, I always take my kids into Mass to the, to, because they have so many wonderful places. And if they're having the same vacation as us, the lines go all the way down to the middle of Boston. Whereas if it's just New Hampshire, we walk right in and walk right out, and it's, I just think it's a lot easier, and so I, and I appreciate what the administrators, I would, I would feel really bad if, if we're hearing from not only the NTU, but all of our administrators seem to be in agreement, so for us to go against them, I, I, I don't, I don't think I would want to do that. I find that Mr. McKinney is much too eloquent for me to want to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zeeem. Dr. McKinney and then Ms. Gilio.
I was just gonna share that, you know, the calendar in the early release days, you know, I've definitely heard challenges about that from parents and teachers and why it's been put in place. That would be something that we'd have to negotiate with the union and all the bargaining units and come to some consensus around that, so it wouldn't prevent us from revisiting that, and I completely understand. Kindergarten teachers, after working with little ones all day, are not really excited about two hours of professional development at the end of the school day. But maybe after this year, the union might be willing to move those days to the beginning of the year like we did this year. But that would be something that we would approach during negotiations this year, so again, particularly with that is the food service department and some of the other bargaining units, secretaries, paraprofessionals, it's, it's a harder twine to unravel, more than just switching the day of the week or making full days, so just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney, and we do have five bargaining units that we are negotiating with this year, so it's a good time to start those discussions. We'll see where they lead. Ms. Gilio, and then I'm gonna ask that we move on and take a vote.
Yep, I think that the first week in March makes perfect sense, and all the years that I taught in Massachusetts, it was always the week that included Presidents' Day, that was the Massachusetts Vacation Week. And so I don't think we would want to move it back to that last week in February, because then we would have precisely what we don't want, which is both states on vacation at the same time.
Okay. All right, with that, I'd like to go ahead and have Ms. Bishop call the roll on the motion by Ms. Brown to move the calendar to curriculum for review. To the, I'm sorry, to the curriculum committee for review. Yeah. Oh, I organized myself out of my list. There we go. Okay, so on the motion to send the calendar to committee, Jen Bishop votes no. Sharon Gilio?
No.
Heather Raymond?
Uh, no.
Dottie Odin?
No.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Paula Johnson?
No.
Ray Guarino?
No.
Sandra Zeeem? Sandra Zeeem? I see her saying no, but I can't hear her. Oh. She's like, no, okay. Okay. And Gloria Timmons? No. Okay. Heather has a better visual on you guys than I do. So eight noes and one yes. Noes have it. Okay, so I am looking for a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 school district calendar.
Point of vote, Madam President, do we have to vote now to extend our meeting because we're past the two hours?
We do have to do that. I was hoping to finish this one item and then this one item on the agenda and then take the vote.
Okay.
Is that acceptable to folks?
I seconded your motion.
Yep. Okay. So I'll change it to, I make the motion to approve the calendar, and Ms. Timmons seconds it. Does anyone have anything to say that they have not already said? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. You said you and Gloria?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, my phone was about to extinguish itself. Okay. Do you want me to do a roll now? I don't see any hands saying that they have something new to say. So yes. Okay. So Jen Bishop votes. Where did my list go? Okay.
It's orange.
It's orange. Yes. Oh no, it was just my head. I forgot where it was. Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Heather Raymond?
Yes.
Dottie Odin?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
No.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Ray Guarino?
Yes.
Sandra Zeeem? Sandra?
Yes.
Right. And Gloria Timmons? I didn't hear you either, Gloria.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not on mute.
Yeah, I just didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, I think it was the, like, train of dogs and children that just went by my door. Okay, all right, so, as Ms. Johnson pointed out and Ms. Odin also pointed out in the chat, we've exceeded our two-hour limit. The items left on our agenda are the CDC control metric that was requested by Ms. Zeeem, public comments and comments. I, I would propose that we have a motion to extend for half an hour to get through those things.
So moved.
Okay, I heard Jessica louder, so, oh.
Now seconded.
First, and Ms. Brown seconded.
I'll second it.
Okay. So the motion is to extend for half an hour. Hold on. Does anyone want to speak to it, or can we just vote? Oh, good, everyone looks tired and ready to vote. Okay. Jen Bishop votes yes. Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Heather Raymond?
Yes.
Dottie Odin?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Ray Guarino?
Yes.
Sandra Zeeem?
Yes.
Gloria Timmons?
Yes.
The yeses have it. Okay, so we've extended for 30 minutes. So, I'm hoping that we can be efficient with our time. The last item of new business that I have is this CDC chart that Ms. Zeeem asked that we include in the packet. Ms. Zeeem, did you want to speak to it?
I think that can easily be taken care of at the next meeting.
Okay, any objections to moving this to the next meeting? I see that. Is that the 11th or the next full board meeting? The 11th. Okay. When we talk about COVID again. So I don't see any objections, so we're going to move this item to the 111 agenda. Great. And that makes that easy. So it's now time for our public comments. I'm gonna ask callers to make sure to keep their comments brief, under two minutes. We've been struggling with that lately, so please identify yourself, state your address, and keep your comments less than two minutes. I really don't want to have to cut people off because we run out of time. I hate, hate doing that. So, we can be respectful of each other. I know people have strong feelings and they want to get them across, and we're happy to hear it. I just want to make sure everybody gets their turn. So, do I need to repeat the number, or do we have callers already?
I have one caller in the waiting room.
Okay.
Presently.
All right, well, we'll take that caller and then we'll see what happens. All right, good evening, caller 3468. If you could please identify yourself and state your address. Hello, caller 3468?
Hi, so my name is Alicia Houston. My address, I'm really uncomfortable sharing, so I don't know if that's a necessary requirement.
Are you a Nashville resident?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm a Nashville parent. Everyone in, yeah, okay, perfect. So, I am calling today to express concern regarding the handling of the return of returning children to in-person learning. It is actually my understanding that special education students, which would have been included as a part of this agenda, as a return to school, that they can actually request additional compensatory services. It is also my understanding that should a child's accommodations not be met under a 504 or an IEP, that a parent can and should request an advocate, as well as file a formal complaint through the Office of Civil Rights, as those are violations from the Americans with Disabilities Act without the accommodations. I would encourage those parents to pursue those options. In addition to that, I encourage every parent who has experienced any form of social, financial, or other loss through no fault of their own as a result of the Nashville School District's refusal to return to just, sorry, the refusal to include full-time in-person instruction. You can actually file a formal invoice for your lost amount to the district for any losses and/or costs affiliated to that decision of the district. I'd also like to request that the board refrain from further spending until a time when the children are allowed back in school. How could we even possibly consider approving a calendar for next year when we still don't even have a fully structured one for the existing one and we are halfway through? Lastly, it is absolutely disheartening, although I understand where the teachers are coming from and they are working Lastly, it is absolutely disheartening, although I understand where the teachers are coming from and they are working extremely hard. Our children have not been in school for almost a year. Why would we be planning and making accommodations for flights, vacations, trips if we are still afraid to reopen the schools? That is absolutely ludicrous. And it's backwards thinking. There is absolutely no one who should be planning a vacation while our city is drowning. Open the schools. There's no other reasons for it, and the numbers that we were provided this evening are completely inflated and they are not accurate. And someone somewhere really truthfully needs to look at the heart of those numbers because they don't add up to us being closed. We are not substantial reopen.
Okay. Thank you, caller. Um, good evening, caller, I'm sorry, zero, six, three, four. If you could identify yourself and state your address.
Uh, good evening, this is Adam Markou. I'm president of the Nashville Teachers Union. I live at Four Delorean Lane. I have two students in the Nashville School District, one at Nashville High School South, one I've made unstable, and one who is not old enough for school yet. Um, I had a few comments that I wanted to make tonight. First, on the calendar. Um, if you recall, this calendar was originally on a, on an agenda for March of twenty twenty, um, and then COVID pandemic broke loose and here we are talking about it tonight. So, um, some historical information, early release was moved to Fridays for one year in the nineties, I believe, and then was quickly moved back. Um, I'll let you wander down the road of why Fridays did not work, um, for early release. With, um, it being on a Friday. Um, February vacation has traditionally been the week after President's Day. I have seen it twice attempted to be the week of President's Day and pandemonium breaks out in the district. There are two things that will bring a mass crowd to a Board of Education meeting in my tenure here. Um, it's talking about eliminating sports and changing the school calendar, um, to, from the traditional vacation weeks. Um, not an opinion, just a perspective of someone who sat through many of meetings over the last ten years of this district. Um. Snow days, um, there's a misnomer out there that they're gone forever, which isn't true. Um, I think Dr. McKinney cleared that up nicely this evening. Um, that there are rules and regulations set by the state for remote learning, snow days in a typical school year. Um, there, there are special waivers in place right now because of COVID nineteen that allow that to happen, so, um, you know, that is a discussion for down the road. Uh, my final comment tonight is, um, to the board. Um, right now you are scheduled to send children and staff back into our schools on January nineteenth. Yet this board will not meet in person for the foreseeable future. And I'm not here to tell you, um, that your reasonings, one way or another, are invalid. Um, but the nine of you had a choice, um, and have a choice on whether you report or not. Um, and there is this misnomer that everyone else has a choice, and that's not true, as I've stated a million times. Um. Whether you agree with remote learning, hybrid learning, in-person learning, or whatever, um, that's not the problem that I have with tonight's decision. The, tonight's decision, as of now, is that you will continue to send staff and students into buildings while you will refuse to meet at Nashville High School North. And, um, again, your, your opinions are not invalid. I just think they can be seen as somewhat hypocritical that the board is not safe or the members of the board don't feel safe meeting in person. Um, but we're gonna send our faculty and staff and students back into the schools, um, starting, um, right now as of January nineteenth. Now, could that change on January eleventh? I guess so. Um, you're having a special meeting to discuss it more completely, and, um, we'll wait and see what happens then, but, um, it has not been well-received out in the land of, um, public opinion this evening that the board will continue to meet, um, via Zoom and not at Nashville High School North moving forward, and I just felt that I needed to address, um, that with you. Um, and I wish you all a Happy New Year and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markou.
Wish you all a Happy New Year and thank you.
Okay, hi caller five, four, one, five. Um, you're on the Board of Ed. If you could please identify yourself, um, and give us your address and keep your comments to less than two minutes.
Hi, this is Robin Guley, lifelong resident in Nashville on Robinson Road. And I called in last week and spoke on behalf of the hard-working teachers amongst many other people associated with the district. And I guess the reason I'm calling in again today is to please ask as a citizen here in Nashville to consider the views of the teachers, to hear them out, bring them to the table, listen to them, and, um, consider it for the next meeting and until the end of the school year. I think it's so important to get the teacher's voice heard and, um, work as a team. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And I don't have anyone else in the waiting room at this time.
Okay, that concludes our public comment period. Um, so, uh, thank you, everybody who called in tonight. Um, and again, I apologize for misreading my own agenda, um, earlier this evening. That was an embarrassing snafu. Um, so the only other item, I'm sorry, I didn't ask if we had any other new business. Um, the only other item I have on my agenda is board member comments. Um, did I miss any new business that people wanted to? Okay, I see no one, so I apologize for that. Um, board member comments. I'm just gonna go around, um, with my list. It's perfectly acceptable to make a comment or pass on a comment. Um, it's up to each individual board member. Um, so, um, first I have, um, Ms. Timmons.
No comment, a pass.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Timmons. Um, next, Ms. Dean. Oh, Ms. Dean, you're on mute, my dear.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you very much.
I wish everybody a Happy New Year full of love and peace and joy.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Okay, Ms. Bishop? Um, just thanks for giving me all these extra tasks with clerk. Um, I think it'll be fun, uh, but I have no other comments. Okay. Tag, you're it. Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. Um, I want to say thank you to the teachers. I, then I hope you had a really nice long break, uh, and got some respite over the holidays. And I appreciate that the, you're back in the classroom virtually, um, or in the classroom for some of you this week, and I really appreciate that. Um, I want to wish well to all the families and students. Wish you both health and happiness for the new year. I want to welcome specifically, um, Spencer and Liz. We're really glad to have you guys. You both had some great contributions tonight, and I look forward to hearing more from you. And, uh, thanks to the administration for everything you've done to prep us for this meeting and for the year ahead. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Um, next we have Mr. Garino.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll, I will try to be, be brief. I have a few points, uh, a few things I want to say. Um, I want to, uh, welcome our two new, um, student board members. I also want to thank our teachers for, um, doing extraordinary things under duress. I know there's a lot of them that think it's just empty platitudes, but I really do appreciate hard work that the teachers do in this district. I am going to agree with Mr. Markou that we should be giving our teachers choices as we go back into hybrid. I think this board should start think, should start thinking about those teachers who, um, who may be in the high-risk category but don't qualify for, um, ADA or FLMA or, or they have someone at home who's at high risk. Um, I think we ought to be doing something about that and start to think about giving our teachers some choices. I think we missed the boat in New Hampshire, and I think the state and federal level really, uh, they, they really missed the boat with COVID. We should be doing testing. We should have had testing for our teachers and our students. Um, I, I don't see that in our district. And I think, uh, teachers should be first with vaccine. I think, I think Ms. Gilio said that. I agree. Um, I agree a hundred percent. So, uh, I also want to wish everyone Happy New Year. I hope we get off on a, on a good start. And I congratulate Ms. Raymond for becoming president to the board. Um, and I'm gonna continue to do whatever is asked of me, of this board. I want the people of the city of New Hampshire to think about what's gonna happen over the next two years. What's happening in Concord is not good because I see, uh, what's happening in Concord is that they're abandoning public schools in New Hampshire. And, and that's at the state level. Um, and, and that's not good for, for New Hampshire. I think, uh, I think that's gonna be, continue to be a problem in New Hampshire as we continue to go to the same place for funding. We continue to go to, go to property taxes, and that's, we, we need a, we need better funding and more funding at the state level as well as a federal level. Uh, because our, our public schools are, are our most important asset, uh, in this city. I said that three years ago when I ran, and it, and, and I will continue to advocate for that. And, um, so, um, as I said, I, I wish everyone a Happy New Year and, um, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garino. Um, Ms. Gilio?
Hi, I just want to wish a Happy New Year to our staff, our students, our parents, the rest of the members of the administration and the board. Um, I, I know that things are bad right now, but I look forward to them getting better as the next several months go by. Um, and hopefully we can all plan wonderful vacations next school year. So, um, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gilio. Uh, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and I hope twenty twenty-one is a lot better than what we've lived through in twenty twenty. I'd like to say, um, thank you to administration for everything they've done. Um, I welcome the new students, um, to become, be part of our board. It's a learning factor. It really is. And I'd like to address a few things about our schools being closed. We all got letters from administration, from, I'm not administration, from teachers and parents, um, giving their opinion. One letter really struck out at me. I'm not gonna give the person's name because I don't think it's right. But in this letter, it really touched on the fact that she was writing to express her support for high school hybrid plan that has been submitted by the high school administrators. It has been a very long nine and a half months. I feel we know more about the virus and have implemented the precautions to keep staff and students safe. She said that she respects both sides between hybrid, hybrid or remain remote. First, it has been difficult to teach. Yes, some of my students are learning, but as a teacher, when I log into my classroom, all I see is a wall of not, of names, no faces. The policy of not mandating cameras be turned on has led me not to, to be connecting to my students on any kind of emotional academic level. When I call on a student, I often get absolutely no response. I am left to wonder if the student, students is even really there or have they, or are they distracted with what is going on in their household to distract them? Second, I saw the data in your board packet about the number of absentees from quarter, quarter one last year to this year. Honestly, I'm not surprised to see the significant increases in absences, especially at South. I see in my classes, I have, often have students say, I am not in class because I was in my car or I worked till eight AM and I was tired. In addition, these students are just turned off by remote and are done with it. Third, I am teaching honor level classes and yet I have more Fs than I have ever had. I pride myself on working with students and giving them every opportunity to succeed. However, in this environment, it has been very difficult. It's not working for me. I am failing as a teacher. I have no data but rumor out there that the Fs in quarter one was significant. Again, not surprised. We have students that no matter the environment will succeed, but they're a significant population that is not succeeding and is not just special education, uh, English language learners. These students are falling further and further behind in their academic learning, and I wonder what the long-term effect will be. Guessing it is not good. Fourth, I am strong advocate of athletics and support them. However, we are able to allow students to place thought for the mental health, but what about those students that are not involved in athletics? Isn't that mental health just as important? You cannot tell me that remote is making, is, is meeting those social, emotional needs that some of our students desperately need. Um, and then it just goes on. Finally, I saw the data from surveys as of Monday, December twenty-first, was sixty forty to return to hybrid. I am not sure how anyone can imagine that data. Personally, I feel the staff that are adamant about perfecting remote are more vocal than those of us willing to return with the proper safety precautions. So we do have staff members out there, and I had to read this because this tells the other side of the story on parents and teachers who have not been vocal about remote, that they feel that in the classroom has meaning and they're seeing students failing. And I commend this person. This was a very touching email to me. And when we talk about funding, more funding for the schools, I can't even imagine more funding for the schools when we don't even have kids in schools. What are we funding? And to talk about, the state isn't gonna give us money, we're gonna see more private schools, more charter schools opening up because we're gonna have commercial buildings that have empty, um, vacancies in their, um, offices that parents are going to figure out the way to get the certification and get their kids back in school and start learning again. I'm for charter schools. I'm not gonna lie. I, and not every kid is doing well in public school. One-size-fits-all does not work. So, I would say to this board, and I agree with Mr. Markou, which is hard to believe again, but he's right. We're telling teachers, but they have to get back in the classroom, especially with special ed's and five oh four that command these teachers and parents to be in the classroom because if not, we're gonna get sued. And these parents will come out, they will sue us, they will find the advocate, they'll go to Parent Information Center, they'll go to pick, they'll go to DRC, and they will get those lawsuits going because their kids are not being met on the educational needs. And ELL students e, will also be suffering and will have the feds down on us again. So I would behoove this board to take a really good look at everything, numbers and cases. Deaths are two different things, and let's really look at the numbers, and everybody looks at me like I'm crazy because I sit and I do my homework. And I'm not lying about these numbers. I would never sit and lie about anything, and I would never try to hurt an adult or student. Thank you very much. I will hope you all have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Um, Ms. Oden?
Uh, thank you. I, uh, first want to welcome, uh, our new student representatives, Liz and Spencer. Thank you. I'd also like to say, we received, um, quite a few emails. One, uh, lady asked that her name not be made public. And I just want to say to anybody who writes to the board, when you write to the Board of Ed, all of the emails we receive under that title are public. So if you are concerned about that, uh, I would recommend that you only put your first name or whatever, but those are public emails when they're sent to the Board of Ed. And I want to wish everybody, uh, a happy and healthy two thousand twenty-one. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Oden. Um, so I'm last and I will, um, try to be brief. Um, welcome to our, um, new student members. I know everyone has welcomed you already. Um, just so you know, sometimes our meetings run late. Um, you are not obligated to stay here, um, until late hours if you have, um, an academic um, need to leave at a certain time. So I know, um, frequently you might have an exam the next day or a paper that you need to write, um, and we understand that you're students. Um, so please don't feel obligated to stay until the end. Um, we're happy to catch you up. Um, also, um, you know, if there's a, we've had members have to go to sporting events or other things. Um, and, uh, in the past, the members have talked to each other, so, um, if one member, student member has a sporting event, the other one can give their statement. So um if one member, student member has a sporting event, the other one can give their statement. Um, we're totally comfortable with that. We want this to work for you as well as for us. Um, other than that, um, I just want to acknowledge um all of the people who um did write to the board um over the the winter break. Um, I received like 80 or 90 emails. It was it was an overwhelming amount. Um, know that if I didn't respond to you, I did read all of them. Um, I just wanted to spend some time with my own children during their break as well. Um, and um all of the emails um on both sides of um people's feelings about remote versus hard uh hybrid are um emotional and heartbreaking and um and I just want you to know that we're listening. Um, we are trying to do the best that we can. Um, I don't know the answers. Um, and I, you know, I have to listen to um the experts. Next week, our meeting on the 11th will be specifically to talk about um where are we now with COVID? Um, what's going on um with the schools? Like what do they need? What are our um sports and grades and all that? All of that stuff all together in one meeting um because I suspected it would be um quite a robust discussion. Um, I think that's all. Um, please know that lunches are back again at their normal places. If you need to know where, um, it's on our website. Um, feel free to take advantage of that. Um, students know that all of the school libraries um are available for you to um take out electronic books. Um, so feel free to email or message your librarian um if you would like things to read. Um, I highly recommend it. You've got a lot of great great titles out there available through the eBooks. Um, that's all I've got. I um I would like to end it. I have a an appointment first thing in the morning for medical. Um, so um I am willing to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, uh, Ms. Johnson, I heard. Was that correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
I didn't, I don't know who said it. Dottie?
Second, yes.
Yeah, Dottie, okay. So Ms. Johnson moved the motion to adjourn, seconded by Ms. Oden. Um, Ms. Bishop has her orange sheet. Now she put it away. Okay.
I did already clean up. I told you, I like to be efficient. But I can easily access things. So on the motion to adjourn, uh Jen Bishop votes yes. Sharon Gilio?
Yes.
Heather Raymond?
Yes.
I don't know why I'm writing this down, like one of you is gonna say no.
Happens sometimes and we gotta keep it covered.
Dottie Oden?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Yes.
Paula Johnson?
Yes, and you're doing a fantastic job. I forgot to tell you that.
Hey, thanks. I'm literally trying very hard.
You're doing great.
Ray Guarino?
Yes.
Uh, Sandra Zim? Yes, I see you had none. And Ms. Timmons?
Ms. Timmons was a yes as well.
All right. So the motion to adjourn passes at 9:22.
Okay, great. So we are adjourned at 9:22. Um, good night, everybody. Um, I will see some of you on Zoom or in person on Wednesday.